Okay.
That's page 119, 120, by the way.
To get started on assessing, you know, one of the things to look at with the assessing budget is, when you look down into the revenues column, the gray, everything that's in gray is what's reimbursable, fifty percent from Camden?
Kerry's portion.
Excuse me?
Kerry's portion. Because the numbers in gray, some of them represent Kerry's wages and benefits, and others are his assistant's benefits.
Right. But basically, all of that, everything that's in gray is reimbursable from Camden. That's what we track. And so if you go down to the bottom, that's what we, under the revenues, the Camden reimbursement is sixty-nine thousand and four dollars, based on the budget.
One hundred and four.
Sixty-nine, no, no.
Sixty-nine, one oh four is what I've got.
Sixty-nine, zero, zero, four.
Oh, there's another, there's a hundred dollars in copies.
Oh, I see, oh, yeah, yeah. Yep. But the reimbursement from Camden is sixty-nine, zero, zero, four. So going through that, and, you know, one of the things with assessing, with assessing like finance, some of the stuff that they, that's done in behind the scenes is done quietly. It doesn't get a lot of, a lot of press, a lot of fanfare, because it's, the work is done in the background. But, you know, with the quality of assessing that we have, we've gone eight years without any litigation of any, any, any type. And with the agreement with Camden now, and we share, you know, Kerry with Camden, and we also share, we use Caitlin from Camden to help here in Rockport. It means that the assessor, Kerry, is able to focus on some of the higher elevation things and get at doing some more, some more assessing and actually chasing value. So in the past year, he's brought in, working with a consultant that we brought in for, I think it cost us a couple thousand dollars.
Twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred dollars. Basically brought in another five point five million dollars in assessed value that we would have missed normally. A lot of towns miss that stuff, but the work that Kerry and the consultant did was able to bring in another five point five million dollars in assessed value. And also another two point one million dollars in additional value from the Samoset time share. So that's a, that's a total of, in a year when we didn't see any real growth, of seven point seven million dollars of new value that was chased down by the assessor and, by Kerry having the time to do that extra work rather than dealing with the day-to-day mundane stuff of just running the office. Because with the three of them, with Caitlin and Kerry and also Hannah, working, they're able to cover the office and get all of the work done. So that's a, I mean, that's a big deal for us, particularly in a time when we're, you know, where we've lost so much value, clawing back some of that value is really important to us. And I, you know, I don't know if we got any growth other than that. Did we have any, was a couple?
Last year was totally flat.
Totally, totally flat. So the only value we had is what we were able to chase down. So you'll see the, you know, the part-time assessor is, I mean, the administrative assistant is there. That's Hannah that works in the office when you first come in the door. But if you goes down through the purchased and contractual services, you'll see there's some vision increases for vision software. And the number on thirty fifteen, that could get reduced by ten thousand dollars because of the work Kerry did with the vision company. They reduced the cost to us. We budgeted twenty-two thousand, two hundred, six hundred and eighty dollars, which includes a bunch of things, but that, fifteen thousand of that was the new vision software upgrade. And so they've dropped that down so that we're only going to be paying them five thousand. Because Kerry, as I think I mentioned at a select board meeting or a previous, you know, budget meeting, that the work Kerry did over that, the past six months, six or eight months, I believe, has helped them out, it's helped us out, it's given us a software program that we had a hand in developing. And so it will work exactly the way we want it to, hopefully.
Someday.
That's the plan. And in, and, so they've, they've had somebody that they felt they could trust to help, you know, be the beta tester of this. And it's, it's going to save us an additional ten thousand dollars. So fifteen, total of fifteen thousand dollars.
So what should that number be? Should it be?
It should be ten thousand less, so twelve, six, eighty.
Twelve, ten thousand less, okay.
We already taken out of five thousand.
Oh, you already took out five?
Right.
Yeah. The extra, the ten was an additional ten thousand.
Yep. So, you know, the next is, the web hosting is the map geo. And so the planning, public works and assessing all split. The web hosting for map geo GIS system, I don't know if any of you have used that system. You probably use it all the time. I am on it at least once a day, probably several times a day. It's my, you know, it's my go-to, and I think you, for you, it would be your go-to thing. It saves you from having to come in the office and, you know, get all that stuff. So it's a huge, huge savings for you. But it's also a huge savings for us because now people like Peter don't have to come into the office.
Take your time.
And we take our time to deal with it. They can get exactly what they're looking for, when they want it. And they, you can do that at ten o'clock at night when the kid's in bed, you know? Which is a, it's, there's a cost to it, but it's a valuable service, and I think people use it, I use it all the time.
Public access is really good. And it's, it's easy to use. I don't know if anybody, people are on the table, you just look at it every once in a while, just to see what you are, what your neighbor is, or something like that. And for that money for the public, and it's not difficult to use, it's not one of these things where you have to have a PhD to figure out how to use it. It's actually fairly easy to use, so it's a very good.
Where do we get instructions on how to access it?
Right on the town website.
Yeah. It's under the assessing page on the map geo. I should be the poster child for ease of use, because if I can use it and navigate it, it's easy. But it's got very useful information in it, and it's very helpful. And that's, as we talked about, the ortho imagery, that discussion was, the ortho imagery will improve the quality of this piece, correct, Kerry?
Absolutely, yeah.
So the ortho imagery, which comes in someplace else in the budget, but for the purchase of the upgraded ortho imagery, will improve the quality of the aerial photography so that it, this, this will be even more useful as we go forward. Line, professional services thirty-sixty, that is the line where the twenty percent of the Camden assistant is, comes out of that. We, we use Caitlin's time for the assistant about twenty percent of the time. So that's, how much is that? Is that all of?
Fifteen-six.
Yeah.
Fifteen-six is all of Caitlin's time. And the advantage to that, as we talked about a little bit earlier, is that we have basically two heads thinking, working on projects. And when it comes time for inspections, those go a lot faster because two people can go to the site, and they can, and they can go through that inspection much quicker. And in these days, it's, I believe it's better to have two people go to an inspection than certainly one. Because, you know, you never know what's going to happen at that inspection.
So there's a.
Jan?
Is fifteen-six forty percent of her salary?
Twenty percent of her salary.
Salary and benefits.
Yes, salary and her benefits.
Salary and benefits.
Seems to be a discrepancy if you look at the supporting page. Says fifteen thousand even.
Yeah.
Might just be a typo.
Yeah, the fifteen-six is right, I presume.
Yeah.
Yes. Those numbers are provided from Camden.
So then, training, mileage reimbursement, the mileage reimbursement is for the administrative assistant that works in the office, if she has to do any driving around. Which, this one, lodging, is for the different trainings that Kerry, Kerry goes to, and also that if Hannah's going to, and is Hannah?
She's not in lodging, no.
She's not in any lodging. There's a lot of training that they do, and actually Kerry does here. One of the things that Kerry does is tomorrow, there's an assessors association meeting at the, at our Richardson room, and there'll be twenty-five or thirty assessors from around the area that will be participating in a training, which is monthly, monthly held at the, at the Richardson room. You know, it depends on the number, whatever he has going on, but there could be, you know, twenty-five or thirty assessors here at any given point once a month. So dues and membership serve for all of his different, different professional organizations having to do with assessors and Hannah's membership and, but everything that's gray, we bill out half to Camden. Training and education is, you know, for the different conferences and training that they do, which is supplies. And when you get down to the capital items, you see the, the vision software, oh, the capital items under computer equipment, that's for us to purchase a server to house the vision software. If we didn't own the server, we, we could not, we could choose not to own our own server, but it would cost us six thousand dollars a year for them to store our information. So having our own server, which gets backed up at the police station, I believe, correct? Having our own server backed up at the police station seems like the way to go. So the, our, our information will be stored in-house. You know, it, six thousand dollars a year to store information seems like a lot. If it was a thousand dollars a year, that might be something different, but six, I mean, we can.
Expected life of that server is what?
Five to seven years.
Okay. Can I ask, I want to go back up to thirty-three-twenty, which is listed as telephone, but you said it's actually for the vision software server.
Which one?
Thirty-three-twenty.
No, that's just the phone.
That's just phone?
Phone and his.
Well, it says phone, but I thought somebody said that's actually for the server. You know, cost of running it or something.
No, Kerry, it's for his phones in the office, and then he has a wireless router-type thing, he can get internet on his laptop while he's out doing inspections.
Okay.
So it's for those two things.
I'm just wondering whether, whether telephone isn't too twentieth-century a term. Stuff that goes towards our IT.
Yeah.
Should be noticeable, could be listed as computer equipment or something like that, rather than as telephone.
Yeah, he, he does have a laptop a little smaller than this one, so when he goes out and does inspections, he's able to enter the data in right there.
Yeah.
And it just automatically downloads to.
Oh, I have no complaint about the device. I just, I just think that it looks like telephone.
Is that a new expense because it's, it's more than double the previous year?
It should, we missed it in last year's budget.
Oh.
Or this current year's budget.
We missed the web connector thing?
So we missed it, but we've only, we haven't paid out.
You've only got two hundred and something dollars left for the year, as of December.
Well, true, but you've got seventeen-hundred-and-eighty to Dan's reasoning, it's a hundred and seven percent increase.
Yeah, but that number probably only represents through November, because you get the December bill in January, as you would any of your utilities.
So if you go down to computer equipment, again, the server is one thing. And then the mapping, if you go down to seventy-four-ten, that's the ortho imagery. If you, if you were listening, there was a discussion about whether to try and buy that out of this year's budget or not. And the decision was that we could, we could wait and just budget for it this, budget this year and put it in the budget, and the money that was, we're roll over money that'll go into the UFB that will help offset this cost. But the, as I said, the ortho imagery will greatly improve the quality of the photography and the, and the amount of value that we get out of that.
Kerry, could you give the Reader's Digest version of that for maybe some of the members of the Budget Committee who didn't?
Sure.
Weren't familiar with the discussion we had earlier?
Sure. The ortho imagery project, the federal government, the state, and the county have teamed up to, to some degree subsidize towns in acquiring this photography. It's pretty expensive for towns to do it on their own. So what these grants do, they pay most of the fee, and all we have to do, if we wanted this, to buy what they call buy up into higher-quality photography. So the base level started out a few years ago at twenty-four inches, now the base level is eighteen inches, but it's really not usable. It's, it's okay for some very general work, but not really that usable for mapping and things like that. Without, without the county, state, and federal government participating, that twenty-two thousand would be somewhere probably in the sixties or something like that. So it's, it's quite, it's quite a good deal for us.
What is the, what is the registration now? It's going to be?
Three-inch, three-inch.
Three-inch, okay.
So the pixels are three inches, if you can imagine it.
Yeah.
As opposed to two feet.
Right.
So what that means is you can get closer down to the ground, your view can come closer down to the ground.
I understand.
Because the pixels are smaller.
Yeah, I understand.
It's three inches. So, and it, and it, when the program was originally, this is the first year that they've changed the condition of the program with the contractor. It used to be that when they flew Knox County, you bought in or you missed out. And the way the program has changed now is that you can, you can essentially, we can, they're flying Knox County this spring, but they got their budget numbers out late, we couldn't budget it. So they're going to allow us to fly it in the next year. And when, that's, which is quite a departure from the program. And he explained it to me that the reason that they built that flexibility into the schedule is, let's say they're scheduled to fly Knox County, and it's cloudy here, and they can't do, it's raining here, whatever, the conditions don't allow it, they can go to Fort Kent, or they can go to ports, you know, Portland or somewhere else, and where the weather's better, can fly it. So it actually is a win-win. It allows us to budget smartly, and it allows them flexibility in making better advantage of the weather.
And the options are to buy up to the three-inch level, and are there other options?
There's three, six, twelve, eighteen. We have six inch right now.
So how much, I mean, it's a seventy-five percent increase geometrically, but, but how much realistically is it going to do for you?
It'll do quite a lot. When I, when we spoke about the select board meeting, the board asked me to check out and look at what three-inch looked like. Because one of the things I said was, when I'm, when I'm trying to map something from a deed, and I'm looking, and they're talking about follow the stone wall or cross the stream, I can't see the stream or the stone wall. At three inches, I can. Not all the time very clearly, but I can see enough, in some cases, I saw it very clearly. In other places, I was able to see the indication of a stream or a stone wall, so very, very, very helpful. It's funny, after our meeting, I think it was last month or two months ago, I was working on a deed at my desk, and I thought, gosh, I wish the select board was here. I was tearing my hair out on this, on this deed, but, so it'll be quite helpful.
If, if this goes through the budget, when will it be upgraded?
Not till next year.
Till next year, okay.
Yeah, just a question with regards to, you know, our shared services. How many, how many hours, I guess, would be the way to ask it, a week is Rockport getting? I mean, how do you split that up? I mean, is it twenty hours for them, twenty hours for us?
I work in Rockport every Monday and Tuesday, and Camden every Wednesday and Thursday, and Fridays, it's how I'm needed.
So I guess give me a breakdown of your, of a salaried person's forty-hour week. How's that work?
What do you mean?
Well, how many hours do you work a week, and who gets what?
Monday and Tuesday in Rockport, Wednesday and Thursday in Camden, and Friday where I'm needed.
So if they're ten-hour days, that would be twenty-five and a half hours a week for Rockport. Is that a fair assumption?
That, that would be my, I mean.
I'm just asking Kerry what it works. I'm not asking, I'm trying to figure out what Rockport, do we see a full forty-hour week for Rockport?
No.
Or is there no need for a forty-hour week?
No, we don't see a full forty-hour week.
You see a combination.
So do we need a forty-hour-a-week person?
We're not, we're not lacking in any services, we're.
That wasn't the question. I just said, is, are we?
And I'm answering the question.
Forty-hour-a-week person?
We, we, when I, when I last figured this out, which was a while ago, remember we had a, a select board that was, that was cutting and slashing a number of years ago?
I was, I was suspect of that, too. I mean, I was part of that, so.
You were part of the select board?
Yeah, part of the slashing.
Yeah, okay.
You don't have to give me an education on that.
I'm not trying to. What I'm saying is that Judy Matthew was the assessor then, and I was her assistant. They cut my job. And it's more than a one-person job, and Judy just up and left. We lost a very good, it created an opportunity for me, but we lost a good assessor. I, I came in, and after about a year, maybe it took longer than a year, I convinced the select board that it was more than a one-person job. I, so what?
No, I was just going to say, when I, when I see you working weekends and holidays, and I suspect nights, then that tells me that you've got a lot of work to do that can't be done in a normal week.
But he's, he's getting the work done.
I know, but you shouldn't have to. I don't want to see burnout, is what I'm saying. That's where I'm going with this, so nothing personal.
I, I appreciate that, but I come in on a Saturday morning, because I can get more work done in four hours on a Saturday morning than I can get on a couple weekdays during the, during the week.
But you shouldn't have to, that's the whole.
But I like to, it makes my job go better. It's, it's, it's me, it's nice. I'm not being forced to do it. I, I do it because I like what I do, and it occupies me, and if I'm thinking about a particular problem I was working through on Friday, there's nothing better than to come in on Saturday and get it figured out. That's just how I do it.
So you work ten-hour days, is that what it is typically?
Typically, yeah.
Well, as we've talked about in previous years, this arrangement allows us to, to use Kerry's expertise at a higher level, and then, and then to fill in the other work that's needed with a, a lower-level professional, which saves the town money. That's the way I've always viewed it.
I asked this question last year, and Rick's a proponent of training. Why don't we train Kerry's assistant that we have here so that they're capable of doing it, pay them a little more, and not have to pay our neighboring town?
I'll let you guys address that.
We are training her. I mean, she's going to training with you now. I mean, it's a very, it's a.
I'm not talking about Caitlin, I'm talking about her.
Yeah, right. Hannah, Hannah is going.
And she's budgeted, she went to property tax school last year, she went to the assessors' fall conference last year. And she's doing the same this year.
And we have.
So you have a plan to get her at the same level, so that we can use her instead of?
I don't know, I wouldn't say instead of, you know, I, I don't know.
Maybe Kerry could explain the difference between what Hannah does and what Caitlin does.
Yeah, sure, yeah, sure.
That's where I'm trying to get, can we get Hannah where Caitlin is?
Well, let's hear what Kerry has to say about the difference in what they do, I think would be important, to answer that question.
With Hannah at present is extremely capable, she's a bright young lady, and she does all kinds of clerking tasks. She's, she handles everything from secretarial, which there isn't much of, I do most of, most of that kind of work myself. But she does all of the, all of the day-to-day. She, she, she answers the phone, she's the first person to talk to people. If she can't solve whatever they're looking for, then they come to me. If Caitlin's around, then they go to Caitlin, and then comes to me. And so she handles a lot of the day-to-day processing of things, filing of things, dealing with people, talking with them. Caitlin, though, is an assessor, and, and, you know, as the years have gone, gone by, I think she's now three years into being an assessor. She's bright and personable, and I can have her do things I can't have Hannah do, just from a legal standpoint and from an experience standpoint. You know, if, I'm, I'm really not thinking three years into the future. I asked Hannah to, to learn more about assessing, and she's willing to. Where that leads us, you know, we'll find out as time goes. So, you know, I, I, Mark, not to evade your question, but I don't think I really have an answer to it, other than saying the more capable they are, the better.
Can you, can you talk about the, the type of work you're doing here and the type of work you're doing in Camden, the difference between?
Sure, sure. Well, in, in Rockport, the day-to-day assessing is divided up, it's mostly Hannah and Caitlin, but I do some. I did a whole bunch today. But mostly, but mostly it's handled by Hannah and Caitlin, and I handle all the big projects. And, and big projects is everything from making sure that our assessment levels are correct, dealing with difficult people, responding to abatements, handling projects, on and on and on. In Camden, that's all I do. Caitlin does all the day-to-day. I don't do any day-to-day work in Camden. I only, I only work on the projects. We just had a revale finish in Camden, and as a result of the re, the revale, we had quite a few abatement requests, and I have three more to respond to. I've got that done, and it's time to do inspections, so it's working out just perfect. But that, that's probably the major difference, is Caitlin does all the day-to-day in Camden, and I don't do any, in Rockport, I do some.
Rick, for those of us that weren't around, it isn't past, why the meteoric rise in the salary going back fourteen, fifteen, fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen? What was going on there?
That's when the agreement took place, when he took over two, two towns.
Yeah.
And so that was what the, the two boards decided on for, for salary in, in sixteen, seventeen.
Fifteen, sixteen.
Fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen.
It was a higher level of responsibility at the time, and of course, we only, as Rockport, we only pay half of that.
No, I understand that, but, yeah, that's, you know, fifty percent bump in salary over four years, just, you know, trying to get my hands around that.
I mean, that, that's, that was the reason, because his, his responsibilities and his job changed, and he went up, he was now doing two towns. And as you heard, I mean, Kerry does.
But he's doing two towns part-time.
Right.
I mean, it's not like he's doing two, eight, you know, two forty-hour.
Yeah, I mean, you know, one of the concerns about him working too much, he also, I mean, he gets paid pretty well, you know?
I think he's the highest-paid, you know, person in town.
Yep. But he, you know, when it's, when it's busy, when, you know, doing, when he's doing revale and doing inspections and doing all of that stuff, he's, he may be working fifty-five, sixty hours a week. You know, there's times, there's times where his workload is really extreme.
Last, last year, Rick had mentioned earlier about the, the two major bits of new valuation that I brought in. That was, that was worth a hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred eighty-six dollars in revenues to Town of Rockport. I think, I think you're getting your money's worth. How, how could that not be so?
Well, I, I think last year, when I asked the three-million-dollar question of revenues that might be brought in, we talked about that, and you just said a minute ago, we didn't see hardly any of that, that number that you gave us.
I'm, I'm not sure I'm following you.
It was a three-million-dollar figure that you gave us last year with the Budget Committee. This year, you just said it was six or seven million.
Of new, yeah.
Of new taxable.
Right. The three-million-dollar.
But we didn't see hardly any of that last year, right? So I'm wondering, are we going to be okay this year?
It depends. I mean, you know, we can't, we can't chase the same dollars.
Well, of that hundred and thirteen thousand, we'll probably, we'll probably bring in something, some of that's going to depreciate, but it'll be about something over a hundred thousand will come in this coming year. And then next year, it'll appreciate a little bit more, but it's going to be the gift that keeps on giving.
Yeah, and I'm not being critical, Kerry, I'm just trying to understand this, because again, it's new to me and everything. But, you know, so I understand this money came in sort of last year, but, you know, who was not on the ball the couple of years before that this was not being picked up?
Not on the ball, I was busy doing day-to-day assessing.
Right, yeah.
I didn't have time, that's, that's what, excuse me, that's the distinction we're trying to make, is by having the time to do the high-level assessing, I'm able to do things like that. I'm also able to keep us out of court, you know, and not because I'm settling with people, because the assessments are solid. I'll, I'll venture, Doug, that when we renegotiate the legal contract, that they don't bring up how much they've been on the phone with me as one of the reasons they're raising their rates.
Because it's rare.
Who's they?
The.
The county council.
I guess that's my last comment on that, would be that, wouldn't we see the same thing if we had you here forty hours a week and didn't share you?
No, you had me here forty hours a week, and it wasn't happening.
Yeah.
Well, now we have you less, and.
But we have somebody else as well.
We're paying, we're paying that.
I understand. I think part of the, I think part of the problem here is that what we have. what we have is a line that shows your salary. And we have, over here, a line that shows Camden reimbursement. What we don't have is any way of knowing what part of the sixty-nine thousand, four dollars is your salary.
So.
That sixty-nine thousand is salary benefits. It's, I, I don't know all what's in it, so there's.
Everything in gray on this sheet is in it.
Right. Everything in gray is reimbursed by, by Camden.
Right.
Well. But the sixty-nine, but the sixty-nine thousand dollars reimburses everything that's gray.
That's right.
It does not re, it does not tell me what part of the sixty-nine thousand dollars is being reimbursed. In other words, is Camden paying half of the ninety-four thousand?
It's fifty percent.
I think Megan.
They're paying fifty percent.
Megan can give us an answer.
Because I think that's not what, that's what's not being understood here, is that while we are sharing with you, we are also sharing the cost of you.
Megan, did you wanna?
That does not appear to be, nobody notices that when they looked out and say, you used to make sixty-one, now you make ninety-four. But in fact, you used to make sixty-one from Rockport.
Right.
Now you make forty-six from Rockport, forty-seven from Rockport.
Correct. And also, just emphasizing that, like lodging is on the gray thing. Camden pays half of my lodging expenses. They pay half of my training and education, half of my dues and membership, because it benefits both towns.
Right. And we would be paying all of that.
We used to pay all of it.
So let's let Megan have a shot at, maybe she can help explain this.
So, in fiscal year fourteen, fifteen, total wages and benefits, including his assistant here, was a hundred and seven thousand, four seventy-six. Wages and benefits, including Caitlin, at fifty percent, is eighty-three thousand, four twenty-two fifty. So that gives the towns a net savings of this fiscal year over fourteen, fifteen of twenty-four thousand, fifty-three dollars and fifty cents.
Right. So I'm not sure where Mark's and Doug's complaints are coming from.
It's not a complaint.
Perception.
Okay.
Sorry, you're right. It wasn't a complaint.
And how many hours a week does Caitlin work?
She probably does forty. I've never counted. She's just forty, she's minimum forty.
For, for Rockport?
Oh, for Rockport?
Yeah.
Eight hours a week? We don't, we don't do it on a weekly basis. So, for example, we're, we're, right now, we're, well, once the snow goes, we'll start inspections. And we, Caitlin and I might do three days, four days in a row in Rockport, and the same thing in Camden. We keep track of Caitlin's, Caitlin's time on an annual basis. She doesn't come to us one day a week. There might be a number of weeks where she's not here at all. But it comes out to twenty percent of her time.
I mean, again, I'm just trying to get a handle on making sure that the town is getting our value, and, you know, Megan says, yeah, you know, twenty thousand dollars, that's the value, but I guess there was a time when you were working forty hours a week.
It was never a time I worked forty hours.
It was never.
Well, you know, I know about, I know about working long hours.
Fraser worked slowly for Rockport.
Full-time, yeah, you know, so a full-time work week, correct?
Yeah.
And now you work twenty...
Five-ish.
Twenty-five or so a week, and then Caitlin works maybe eight hours a week. So, before, we had forty man-hours, forty to fifty man-hours a week, and now we actually have less than that.
We also have Hannah there. Can I ask you a question? Are you getting complaints about the assessing services?
No, I'm trying to understand how we're spending taxpayer dollars.
We'd probably send them through Rick.
There's another advantage that, that is less solid, but that's, knowing both towns is extremely helpful. To give an example, when we did the revale, we lost sixty-one million dollars on the waterfront. And leading up, that revale was two thousand fifteen. Leading up to the revale, for years, I was getting complaints from people on the waterfront, and their values were too high. But we had no sales, absolutely zero. So I, and I kept saying, I can't react. I, I have no sales to base anything on. And, you know, the complaints were pretty off, pretty loud, pretty often. It took a lot of work to respond to them. Had I been working in Camden as well, had I had that knowledge, I would have seen that Rockport's waterfront values were higher than Camden's. And the dynamic between the two towns, impossible to be, for me to be aware of, until I had that. Now, had I been working both towns at the same time, when those complaints came in, they would have resonated with me more. I don't know what I could have done without sales, but I would have tried to deal with them, and we wouldn't have dropped sixty-one million dollars all in one year. So, and it, and it benefits, it benefits, my Rockport experience benefits Camden, and my Camden experience benefits Rockport. I know more about the real estate market and, and the values and what, what pushes them by seeing the, the two different towns, you know, up close and personal.
Do you have anything else? I want to ask a question about the, the computer software licenses, the number that got dropped by ten thousand, which is always nice. What's the, the lifespan of that before we have to re-up again? This is an upgrade for.
The last, the last major upgrade was six point five, which is what we're using right now. And that was ten, maybe, maybe eleven years ago, somewhere in there.
So it's not unreasonable to assume that this will last
Oh, sure.
At least a handful of years.
Absolutely, oh, yeah. And if I could just say, just to pat myself on the back, the upgrade is twenty thousand dollars. And Vision asked me to be part of their client advisory team. I'm one of two main assessors who, who's working with them, and ten assessors total. And, and we put in a lot of work. It was good. It was, it was interesting to see how software was developed. We got some things in there that, that I've always wanted in the software, and we're still working on it and developing it. But it did take a bit of my time, and it did cause some Saturdays. But it took a lot, a lot of effort. And at some point, I called the CEO of Vision, and I said, you know, when you originally proposed this, I thought five thousand dollars was a fair deal, but it's not. I said, you gotta do better, because this is taking a lot of my time. And so they took another ten thousand dollars off. And one of the things that annoys me, being, having, used to work in the private sector, now in, now in the public sector, was I, I, and I'm not saying this about my fellow staff, because I don't think it's true for the most part. But I get annoyed when people don't spend town money like it's their own money, like it was a private enterprise. And, and I, and I think that most people would have just let that, thank you for the five thousand dollars, and go. And so I'm always trying to squeeze value out of whatever situation it is, and thinking of the money in a very personal way.
Any other questions on assessing? Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Kerry.
Thanks, Kerry, for coming in.
One of the things could be, perhaps despite the high price of oil, do something reaffirmative. I know I just.
Oh, in here?
But she's got wall sleeves on, and she's a little chilly.
Does anybody, I don't know. It's over there. You want to bump it up a little bit?
I don't know if it went off automatically like it does today.
I don't know. I, I never look at it.
Yeah, I don't either. Thank you, Kerry.
The town clerk is next. Page ninety-five.
Madam Granddeller.
Linda, come on up.
Yeah.
Oh, how do I get that?
Can you seat hard for you? Thank you all.
Thank you, Kerry.
And I, I know that.
I know there's probably a page in here somewhere, if somebody could refresh my memory, but who are the towns that we use to compare, to get wages from?
It's in the front. It's.
Is it in the front?
Yeah.
Camden, Ellsworth, St. George, Waldabaro, West Cassett, Boothby, Boothby Harbor.
And those, and those numbers were obtained this fall?
Uh, yeah, just as this budget process started.
And those are the same, same towns we've been using for?
Several years.
Four, 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 five years?
Towns are just.
And a lot of them were picked because they were about the same size as Rockport, and because they had, a lot of them have a harbor, too, which.
Waterfront.
Makes it, makes it a better comparison.
Do you look at just the budget, or do you look at other benefits?
Do you look at just the salary, I should say, or just, or the other benefits that people may be getting as well?
We just looked at the, typically the set.
Just salary.
Just the salary. So the big, the big thing with the town clerk is always, when you get down to revenues, because that's where all our money comes in, comes in through the town clerk's office. There's not much in the way of changes in the town clerk's budget, as it's been for many years. One, there was a reduction in, I reduced election costs, and I, we talked about that again today, to make sure I reduced election costs by a thousand dollars, to make sure that we don't have, you know, we don't have a presidential election, but.
Isn't it gubernatorial?
Yeah. To make sure that, that my reduction, because of the ranked choice voting, it wasn't gonna mess us up, and Linda felt that that was okay, but, you know, the, we don't know what the ranked choice voting is gonna cost us. You know, that, that one's kind of a crapshoot, but.
But I don't think it's the ranked choice that's gonna cost us. The biggest fees in the election is for the ballots and the programming.
Yep. But, you know, getting another machine, and if we had to get another machine, we're, we're okay, you're, you're okay?
Will the ranked choice have to be counted by hand, or will they have to be?
That will be counted by machine, and then the other four ballots will have to go into the other machine.
You could never do it by hand accurately. We can't, we're not, we can't be trained that way.
So if this turns out to be low, will you just do what you gotta do?
Yeah, we'll have to do what we have. Yeah, we'll be overspent.
Close the poll at seven.
Yes.
When you go down, the computer repair and maintenance is five computers in that office. And, you know, right now, we're at one thousand and ninety dollars, but what was the reason that we thought we were gonna be okay with a thousand dollars instead of upping that?
Because Shay and Brenda are getting new computers.
Oh, that's right, because, that's right. Shay and Brenda are on the schedule for two new, there's two new computers going in that office, so our hope is that with the two new computers, we won't have as much maintenance going on. And, and Linda pointed out that the, one of the things that she felt that the reason that it was high this year was because of the move last year.
The prior year.
The prior year. Yeah, the nineteen thirty was the, the year we had nineteen hundred and thirty dollars in two thousand and sixteen, seventeen, is when we had the, had to move them out back to do the vestibule and the renovation, and the painting and everything in the tax collector's, town clerk's office, so they were out for a month, correct? Was it a month?
Over.
A little over a month.
Six or seven weeks.
Yeah, so, so that money for the move, for the rerouting all the computers and doing all that work, went there. So that's why that, that is higher. And apparently, we've had a lot of problems with those two computers that, so Gus has been in a bunch of times.
So what do you do with the old ones, again? Regardless of where they come from, which department, what do you do with them?
They're cycled out typically. They, they.
I mean, what do you do? I mean, when you say cycled out.
They get destroyed. There's the, I don't, I'm not sure if we're taking them over to the computer recycling thing that.
They either get destroyed, or they go to apartment, a department that doesn't require such a heavy operating system, like the girls out front, myself, we're all very Trio-based, which requires a lot of power. Shay's been having a lot of issues with her computer with Trio just shutting down, and that's because it doesn't have the power to support the program.
Do we have such a department that would require or need one of those?
Um, we've given one to the Opera House before. One's gone to Public Works.
I guess that's where I'm going, is if, if there's somebody that doesn't need that high-volume
Yeah.
whatever, and we're getting ready to buy a new one, and you're getting ready to cycle one out, can we?
I'm, I'm, I'm supposed to get a new, a new computer this year, next year. But the reality is, I, I don't do the heavy lifting of computing power. So I think Megan is gonna get my machine, because she does heavy lifting, and I'll get her, her machine. And mine, mine, which is seven years old or eight years old.
At least.
Yeah.
Because it's Stacy's old one.
Didn't you just get one, last year?
Mine's three years old.
Probably two or three years.
We'll get you an Etch A Sketch, Rick.
The reality is, you know, I'm not doing the heavy computing, you know, I don't, I mean, I use mine for word processing, maybe some spreadsheet stuff. I, I do some spreadsheet work and email, and I, I'm not doing the heavy computing. It's, it's Linda's office and Megan's office that's doing the heavy lifting. So there, you know, actually, Megan just pointed out, the computer that I have now, which was cycled out, that was Stacy's old computer about five or six years ago, and that she had had that for a bunch of years. And it works fine for me. Just in the past couple of weeks, it started to act up. It's like it knows it's going out to pasture. But, you know, it, it works fine to, for me, and I, and I always have the backup of my laptop. But, you know, it's not me. It's, you know, there's other people in the department. Kerry also is another one, that he's doing the heavy lifting stuff. I'm not, I don't need that. So even though my schedule, it says that I'm scheduled to get one, that I'll get the handy, hand-me-down, and I'm okay with that.
Rick, is it possible for you to work just with a laptop? And maybe a second monitor, just to make it easier on your old eyes?
Yeah, I mean, that, that could be possible if I get stuck. There's, you know, the laptops are, they have a much shorter lifespan.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm used to working on a laptop. But frankly, if the laptop were plugged in and I had the screen that I was looking at, I would not know the difference.
Exactly.
Yeah, I, I really probably wouldn't know the difference.
I just wonder if you need both systems.
But I'll, I'm, I'm good with a recycled one.
So last year, when we were talking amongst ourselves, we decided to give you a cell phone budget. And we asked you to keep track of it, to see if it was enough, not enough, too much. How much do you think you're using your cell phone more than you thought you would, or?
Don't put words in her mouth.
I'm using it more because I upgraded my phone.
And we're all happy. And we're all happy.
Oh, I'm over the moon about that.
Me, too. So now I can text, I can text her. She can.
So do you think your stipend is where it should be, or would you?
I don't know what the stipend is now.
That comes up.
It's twenty-five a month.
You should get somebody else to do it.
I can be careful. I can ask questions.
Yeah, okay.
So, not a whole lot of changes in the budget further down. There's the two, two.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Thirty-nine, twenty, training, all of a sudden, I don't remember what happened last year. I barely remember what happened yesterday. Why we went from the three hundred dollar range to the twelve hundred dollar range, and are now keeping that. What, what happened last year that we upped the budget for training?
We didn't up it. That's what we had, but that's all we used. And there's training coming up in April, record management, vitals, tax lanes.
Okay.
May, there's licensing, and in June, there's municipal law.
Are we more likely to use the budget this year?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to see that. One of the, one of the challenges is that most, a lot of the training that Linda avails herself of, and the, and the other women in the, the office, is it's free. It's offered, offered free. You know, I, you are planning on going to training up at Sunday River this summer?
Yeah, the election conference will be in May.
Right.
So the three of us will be going.
Train, the training budget is not one I want to see cut. You know, I would like to, I'm big on making sure people get the training they need. And, you know, like we've discussed, Linda's also gotten certified with, along with Diane on GA, so that, that's been two days of training, which I'm really happy about. Thank you, Linda.
You're welcome.
So there's been, but, you know, some of the training is, you know, a lot of that training is free and provided by the state. training is free and provided by the state.
Well, I will... Under line five zero zero five, supplies. Can you explain that seventeen dollars to me? Well, well, people thought I was giving Carrie a hard time, so I just want to, you know...
Three cups of coffee.
I can. Elections, Stevie can attest to, Jan can.
Peanut butter balls.
Absolutely.
I make a lot of things for elections for my workers, so a lot of that is donated by me, but some things I buy. So, in June, I will spend more money for, on that. You're welcome.
You haven't been victim of the peanut butter balls.
I mean, Rick, honestly, just for her baking.
Peanut butter balls.
Well, I'll make my annual pitch on the revenue number for excise tax.
I have new charts.
I do, I mean, looking at what, at the excise tax tables we have on page one oh one...
We have some new charts.
Last year, we took in eight hundred and thirty-one thousand. At the halfway point last year, we had four hundred and seventeen thousand. At the halfway point this year, we had four hundred and twenty-two thousand, so it seems to me that we're on track to be in the same neighborhood for this year as we were last year, unless something really weird happens in the next few months, and I think the latest numbers bear that out, because I'm just looking at now, the first time I had a low month in, well, March is only partway done, so. And so, you know, when we come to the select board budget, I'll be advocating for increasing that number to at least eight hundred thousand. We have always in the past tried to be reasonably conservative with that number. We don't want to, we don't want to put too big a number in there and then not meet it, because it does have implications for the budget, but on the other hand, we want to be fairly realistic. So, if, if we take the, the four hundred and seventeen thousand, which is the first half of sixteen, seventeen, multiply that by two, you get eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, we came in at eight hundred and thirty-one thousand last year, so it's a, it's a reasonably good predictor. So, if we take the four twenty-two, which is the halfway number for seventeen, eighteen, and double it, that would be eight forty-four. Now, I'm not willing to put eight forty-four in the budget, but I think probably eight hundred thousand is not unreasonable. I would invite Linda to, to say yay or nay on that one.
I think Rick and I are kind of the same, we're conservative, and we did up it a little bit. I think maybe seven seventy-five.
I think I would go along with yours, Ken and Mara, last year's eight, I'd even bump it up to eight twenty-five-ish.
Ooh.
That was your UFB.
Ooh.
Well, we don't use it anyway. That's why I say, I mean, I, I don't want to, I don't want to play it too close to the best or whatever. I agree with your thinking of bumping it up. But last year, I didn't suggest bumping it up at all based on what the numbers were, but the year before, I suggested bumping it up a fair amount, and, and it worked out okay, so. But anyway, we'll be able to discuss that, but I just want to let everybody know that I think that the number that we have in the budget is too low by a fair amount, and so that's, that's an increase of forty-five thousand over the budget, and that, that can help cover a lot of the other stuff that we've talked about on the expense side.
Yeah, the, the revenues are always a topic of conversation, particularly excise tax. When you get, when you get down to where the rubber meets the road at the end of the budget process, and you're trying to make numbers work, that's where, that's where all the horse trading is.
I mean, if it gets down to the end and we're five thousand off, then I'm okay pushing five thousand more in there, but if we haven't pushed it to the limit in the prior discussions, that's, that's why, like I say, the eight hundred thousand number, I, I feel is closer to what we're going to get. I think it's probably still low, but I wouldn't be willing, you don't want to predict that one too close to the vest, because if you, if you do have a bad month or something like that, or something unforeseen happens, but seems like we've been on a pretty good trajectory over the past several years, so.
I'm doing my best, but...
Paying their cars.
Already have.
Taxes on there, so.
Done my part, too.
Anything else on the town clerk's budget? Okay. General Assistance, page one thirty-seven.
This way.
This way.
Here's where we can make the real cut.
Have our... Nice, this is Diane's first...
New General Assistance Administrator.
It's her first budget ever.
And our Deputy GA Administrator back here also.
Has run away.
Who are doing it, both of them are doing a great job, thank you.
And I'll put in a plug for them, because many, maybe you know or you don't know, but when, when Stacy left, she had been a GA Administrator for a long time, she knew the, the business inside and out, and we originally had hoped that Camden could help us with that for a short term, and, and they kind of decided, with fairly short notice, I think, that they couldn't handle it anymore, so these two ladies really were, were thrown into the deep end of the pool very quickly, and, and I was in the office when they were still floundering in the deep end one day, and it wasn't pretty, but they have, they've really, in my opinion, from what I've seen, really worked very hard to get up to speed on this topic.
So, one thing, as Megan just pointed out to me, the year-to-date isn't really up to date here, because it was, with some of the stuff is because it was, hasn't gotten entered in yet, because it was through, when Stacy was doing it, and we, we made the switch over, so some of the year-to-date numbers aren't exactly...
Well, the eight fifty-one represents Stacy's time while she was here, and then the agreement with Linda and Diane didn't start until January, so...
So, there's been some, you know, some stuff that's, some things that are different. But as, with many of the budgets, when you look at the gray section, that signifies something's happening here, and so the gray section is the section that is reimbursed by the state. It's reimbursed at a level of, is it fifty percent?
Seventy.
Seventy percent. So, that's, that shows up in the revenue line down at the bottom, under zero five five two. So, the, the, whatever we budget there, that, that total there shows up in that revenue line, and as we, as you all know, I think, is that we really have no control over this, whatever the number is, is the number, and they spend what they have to spend, and we, we don't have an option here.
I just want to make sure that you're comfortable with what you're, what you're getting.
Yes.
And that brings to mind a question, how is that determined? I mean, there are fluctuating numbers, if you go back to fourteen, fifteen, up through, you know, even this year, seventeen, eighteen. I know seventeen, eighteen was explained, but how do you go from six thousand to five hundred less to seven hundred more? How does that, how do you figure that one out? Which line are you looking at, Mark? The stipend for the position. How's that figured out?
The prior GA Administrator had a lot of unpaid time in fifteen, sixteen, due to illness and family issues, so that's why that number decreased that year.
And she had been doing it for a long time?
How is it based? Is it on an, what, they make an hour, or by how many hours they spend a year?
It's just a stip, it was just, it's a fixed stipend.
So, how come, I mean, I take it we're not seeing any fewer clients, so why is it that much less?
Just the...
Because we wanted to nip and tuck, so we could meet LD one.
Do it my job.
I, I know, but I'm just, I'm wondering, we're not seeing...
If you want to put more money in there, go...
I'm just saying, we're not, it's a fixed stipend, it's not based on hours, it's not based on client hours that come see us. It's based on experience, though, I think. I think that that's a fair thing to say, is that the previous GA Administrator was one of the best in the state and had been doing it for a very, very long time.
That's any criticism.
So, now we've got two for the price of one, though. We have somebody that helped the previous one, plus a new person, so.
Right.
Just trying to figure the, quite a drastic decrease there.
So, I mean, any other questions here? I mean, it's pretty, it's pretty much all cut and dry. The numbers are the numbers. We've seen a big uptick in cases. Sometimes I think that, that is, as soon as you have a new GA Administrator, the, you know, word gets out, and people feel like...
They come in and test you.
They come in and test the waters, and...
And this was supposed to have been backdated to, to like January and February to be paid?
Yes, yep.
And that eight fifty-one indicates that?
No, it's the December thirty-first number.
Right.
All right. But that, January and February has been stipended out?
Yes.
Yes, yep.
And as I recall, the, we get donations for general assistance from people from time to time through the year, people routinely give some money for general assistance, and that's kind of off-budget, if I understand it, and that gives the GA Administrator a little bit of flexibility, I think, so those numbers don't show up.
A lot of times, it's used for things that are, people are just outside of the parameters of qualifying for state-considered general assistance, so we have those.
And so, it means that, you know, in some, it's up to the GA administrators to, to decide, you know, a little bit of money may help, and may, you know, a little bit of money put in in the right place may produce a result that's, that's good, and, and keeps that person out of coming back for more general assistance.
How much money do we have in that kitty now?
Twenty-five hundred dollars, probably.
That's just from this year, or is that in total?
That's Carrie over, Carrie's over.
All right.
But we did get a two thousand donation.
I'm back with Mark, I, just because I keep so attuned with social service issues in our communities, I, I just don't understand, and, and I think somebody just said that there, Rick, I think you said there will be, there has been an uptick in the number of cases, and I, I just don't, I'm not comfortable with a reduction for the stipend. When I first looked at yours, it was, I can't read it with my glasses, anyway, it just seems like, it's like a, what, a twenty-five percent total, even having Linda, a reduction in the stipend for, for the GA people, and their work certainly isn't going to get any less, I, well, yeah, I guess, anyway, I don't see that it's going to get any less, so I, I'm, I'm just not comfortable with that, because of, you know, I, I work with Stacy so much in terms of knowing what was involved, and it's not an easy type of thing, and I, I just, I feel, I, I don't, I don't like that cut.
Typically, when we, when we hire somebody new in the job...
Right.
I mean, they don't come in typically at the same level of the person that had been there for eighteen or nineteen years doing that work. So, they come in at, at a lower rate, and, and my, what I typically try to do is give incentives for employees to get more training, get certi, certified, like with, with Diane, it was, when you get to this point, you get certified, you get a bump in your pay, and, and I can't remember exactly in your pays employment agreement, what, where the, where the bumps in pay are, but...
Well, the stipend went up after I got certified.
Right. Once she gets certified, which she worked really hard and got certified quickly, she went up in pay. She could have not got certified and stayed at the other bump in pay, but we encourage, we encourage people to get trained, and, and we encourage people to, to go to the training and participate, and, and learn more things and become more valuable, and then over time, you know, she'll, she will become more valuable. State, you know, the previous GA Administrator had been doing it for many, many years, was, you know, it's, it's just the...
So, we can anticipate, then, that this stipend will probably increase at a greater-than-the-three-percent rate over the next handful of years.
You could, sure.
I, I know the experience isn't there, I understand that, but darn it all, the workload is there, and the workload is even increasing.
You are free to add more money in if you would like.
It's an unfair world.
It's, I know, it's an unfair world, yeah.
Can I ask, our hundred-dollar advertising budget goes for, what do we advertise?
I believe it's typically the, the rule changes, the changes...
Yeah, we have to have a public hearing every year for the, to...
Got it.
To adopt the, the select board has to vote to adopt the new guidelines, which we don't have any choice, but we have to vote for it, but it's something that has to be done by the books, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions at all here? Diane, anything?
I don't have anything.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you. Page one seventy-nine, the harbor. We have Abby here, and I would note we have Sam in the audience as well, the Chair of our Harbor Committee is here.
I will say my...
Miss Hollywood.
Yeah, my sunglasses are not a fashion statement, I had a procedure done on my eye, so I think it was more of a fashion statement than the eye patch I'm supposed to wear, so just get that out there.
We harbor water all the time.
Right, so I could just, I could, I'm cool enough where I can just wear them inside at night.
Can you see anything with them?
Not much. A whole lot, feels like someone threw sand in my face.
So, as with some of the other budgets, one thing with this budget, if you go all the way down to the revenue section, you'll see there's a hundred and forty-one thousand five hundred dollars in revenue to offset a total budget of a hundred and seventy-nine thousand three hundred and forty dollars, which brings the actual cost of the taxpayer to thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. So, a lot of this, a lot of this budget is, is offset by revenues for moorings and dockage and all kinds of things, that, when we get down to the revenues. But you'll see a, one of the first things, when you go down through the Personnel Services, the Deputy Harbor Master, her hours were increased, I believe, slightly, but the park attendant hours, if you look down to twenty-two-two-two-zero, that, that total has been decreased by fifty-four percent. So, Abby was just thinking that she could do a better job with having the Deputy Harbor Master around more, and have less money budgeted for park attendants to, to be there, so that, that was a, that's a big change there, which brings the salary down by six percent, six point one percent, the salary line down by six point one percent. So, and then, when you go down through the budget, you know, the, the first thing you get to is electricity, that's based on, based, based on what Megan's expected need is for, for that budget. Again, the sewer usage fee, again, based on what, what our bills are coming in at. The same thing with telephone. The crane and hauling fee, you'll see the crane, thirty-four fifteen crane, crane rental and hauling. The four hundred and fifty dollar number is at the mid-year. Does that include the, yeah, that's, that's high for the half of the year, because...
Add a thousand.
Yeah, we have to add another thousand to it, yeah.
Yeah, it's fourteen fifty as of now.
As of now.
Because of the storm that we had in October, we had to get a crane in and get the docks out quickly, and then get them, some of them put back in for the fishermen, and for other work that we had to do, so some of the docks had to come back out and then go back in again, so there was an extra haul of the docks to get that done.
We're working on getting some of that reimbursed through a FEMA disaster recovery grant.
Right. So, is the six hundred number adequate for the next fiscal year?
For standard, you know, not for any contingency, if we just, that would just be putting the docks in in the fall.
It's line thirty-four fifteen.
And taking them out in the spring, but that's not, you know, contingency with ice or any other unprojected, you know, unforeseen circumstances.
Yeah, getting the crane, getting the docks out for that storm...
That was huge.
We would, we would have seen tens of thousands of dollars' worth of damage if we had left them in, just because of the way that, that storm came in, as, as our weatherman knows, it came in pretty ferocious out of the southeast, and, and the swells were six feet in the harbor.
Right, and that was the Rockport Steel, having a guy come in on Sunday to do the wor, you know, to put in a long day to help us take out those...
And the har, and the, and the highway guys.
And all the highway guys, yeah. I mean, that was, yeah, then that's not just representing, not, you know, that's all their...
We left the docks in at the last minute to give the fishermen chance, time to deal with their boats and anybody else, and then got the docks out before they got wrecked, particularly the fishermen's dock and the, the docks at the north end, was that B and, C and D, C and, or D and E dock?
Yeah, all the ones that are southerly facing, E, E dock, yeah.
E dock. And those are docks we just built, and they would have been destroyed if we had left them in, so we opted for getting them out, but it was such an... had left them in. So we opted for getting them out. But it was such an, it was so early in the season that the fishermen and, and other people still needed some docks in because boats were still out on moorings. So we had to put them back in. So that, that bumped up the cost considerably.
Well, it's money well spent.
Yeah, for sure.
I, I do have a question, sorry. And it isn't that. I'm just getting caught up with your, when I'm going down through it, some regards to the overtime for your assistant. Seems to me I've seen, when I've done the warrants last year, there was overtime for, for Eliza.
I think like, I think maybe like 10 hour, you know, maybe-
Well, I'm just saying-
They typically pay it out of the, whatever is associated to the deputy harbor master or the park attendant.
Yeah, I didn't know whether I needed to-
Well, that's something, you got 14, four in there for her. Is that counting overtime, or is that just adding extra hours to her position?
I think that would just, yeah, the total. And then, you know, I would work in with that. So some week I'd use her 35 hours if I used her 42 another, or something. I would manage it so that it wouldn't be overtime necessarily.
I don't want them to complain about not getting overtime either if they're working over 40.
Oh, they-
Oh, they would.
They have to get paid.
But then I would-
So we don't have any plugged in, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I've never-
It's not no planned overtime.
And last, last year Eliza got overtime because the park attendant couldn't-
Was never around.
So, I mean, we only spent $2,000 for a park attendant, which you can offset the overtime with what's not being spent in the park attendant.
But you're not, you're not putting the overtime in the overtime line, just pulling it out of the-
Right. That's where I guess I'm going. So that way, we get a gauge as to how much may or may not be used on a yearly basis.
So the boat-
I never anticipate using any, but we were short-staffed on one hand with the park attendant, one, like for two weeks.
So should we put some in there, Ken?
I don't know.
What do you think? Couple hundred bucks?
I mean, you could put a placeholder in there for, yeah. I mean, that would be totally prudent.
I guess I'd ask Megan, do you, would you rather use that overtime line, or is it easier for you just-
It's easier just to pay it out.
To just pay it out of the, in other words, so the, the 14, four then includes the expectation of some overtime, I guess.
Well, that wasn't what I just heard, though.
I thought it was, actually.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was getting at, was that I would, I would manage it. Eliza doesn't, is not guaranteed any overtime. So with that, we have the understanding in managing, you know, if she worked 42 hours one week, she might work 38 the next.
And we, as a board, can decide we want, we want that tracked separately, if that's something we want to do.
Yeah, if it's record keeping, sure.
But Megan just said it was easier not to, so.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
3305, electricity. That's the biggest expense that we have, basically, for running the place. And you're right out there on the harbor. Why aren't, why aren't we putting solar panels on that little, you know, somewhere out there, either provide for boats coming in, or provide 44U, or hot water for showers? Seems like a lovely place to do it and to advertise our greenness to our clientele.
I like that idea.
So now what do we do with it? She likes it, I like it.
I like the idea.
And what do we do, what do we do to do the roof over? When does the-
Oh, the roof, the actual, in three, three to five years, I believe, because of capital, we're putting in, you know, 3750, or hopefully putting in 3750 this year. So in three to five years, the roof will-
So the time to do solar is right after you do the roof over?
It could be a separate, you know, it could be a separate installation on the, on the longs, or it doesn't have to be on the roof.
The kids would be devastated.
Yeah.
The dogs would be devastated.
I'm sure.
Tough.
But-
Noted.
So when you get down to boat repair and maintenance, that's $2,500. The, one of the big ticket items for that is the, Andre, there's a black rubber rub rail that goes all the way around that boat. That needs to be repaired, replaced this year. I don't know what the total cost is of that. And also, yeah, so that needs to be replaced this year. So that's the big ticket item for that one.
Where is this? I'm sorry.
Boat repair.
3602.
3602.
That's also gen, you know, just the winterizing in general.
Are we going to give Andre a facelift in this budget, or?
The boat of the Andre this year.
The, the Andre.
The hope is that Mark knows this better than anybody, is the hope his legacy Rockport is going to be doing.
Well, they're gonna, we met yesterday on it, and it's, it's, that'll be privately funded.
Yeah.
Good.
We hope.
Between that and the parks.
Well, and, and the garden club, things like that.
The garden, yeah.
We talked about how to do it.
Garden, sorry.
It turns out we found out that it's not made of marble, it's made of limestone.
Oh, that's a good one.
That was very, very unclever.
That's a good idea.
So-
Right on the harbor.
That has some, some ramifications as to how we take care of it.
We were snuck back then to- Yeah.
So anyway, that, that will be an off-budget situation.
Ken?
Yes.
Yeah, I did have a question. 5415, the general supplies, the explanation says-
34, is 54-
5415.
Oh, okay, yep.
Yeah, flags. What do we use flags for? I mean, there's only one down there.
There's one big, big flag, and I, we go through that quite a bit. And then in the summertime, put up a main state flag too, but just the replacement of the, the flags.
We can't get the Veterans Association-
5415?
Or the Rockport Boosters to buy us a flag?
Or a trunk?
That was the fire, the fire chief told me what to put in for the flag, the flag budget, so.
It just seems the right replace them, they probably would say.
Cause they, cause they, they get torn apart.
Yeah, sure, but that's gotta be, we gotta do our flags. Nice patriotic people like us.
A lot of other things come out of there, right?
General supplies, yeah, anything that's not sort of maintenance supplies comes out of there, so mop heads.
So the 650 isn't totally for the-
All flags, no, no, not at all.
No.
Oh, no.
Okay, maybe that was, maybe that was a misunderstanding.
I think maybe that was just-
Can we go back to 3622? The float, float mooring and maintenance. I'm looking at the year-to-date number on that, and it's pretty big.
Oh, the, um, the reason that was big was, as I remember Abby, is that we had some work done for the main channel markers, the moorings.
Yeah, the, the big channel markers, all the chain, all the anchors.
All that had to be replaced last year.
Yep.
And so that, that should be good for several years. This is just for the smaller channel markers that we kind of do ourselves, that Abby does when she's not breaking her finger or something.
So going, speaking of going back further to 3606, what maintenance or repairs didn't we do?
We haven't done the trim yet on the, on the, on the outside, because that was, you know, it starts in July, and then all the exterior trim-
Have we ever gotten a bid to restain the building? I mean, it, it's in, as dire, it's probably in worse shape than the roof is.
Well, I, I would think, I think, I've, I've been told that that's the quote-unquote look of the patina and the weathering, that's the way it's supposed to look, is what I've been told by two people, because I had the same thought, that that's, you know, sort of, it should be restained, but they're actually cedar shingles melt meant to, I mean, and that's, you know, that was what was said.
Protect the product too, I mean.
They were, you know, they said, well, that's the, that's what you're looking for, the sort of patina, patina.
That weathered look.
Yeah, that, yeah. So I, I mean, I don't know, nothing that I've-
Remember I asked that question?
Yeah. Right, nothing that I've, you know, looked at. But the, the, the $4,000 was, 2,500 of it was to do the trim in, in a composite material, so it doesn't continue to rot, because it's rotting badly now and in need of being replaced.
But that's kind of a little patina effect.
Ooh, that's, that's a different, it's a little different.
That's the green.
And I'm just telling you what I was told about how that's supposed to weather the, the shingles.
So that'll get done this spring?
That'll get done in the spring, yep.
Anything else on the expense side? Anybody wants to?
Yeah, quick question. How many pilings you expecting to replace this year? I know you were doing a certain number per season.
Yeah, we're hoping to do, I mean, we're, we try to do 15 a season. This, and, and we're, we're kind of shifting things around, and it's why Rick suggested putting the 1,200 in, because Public Works has been, we've been buying them for $100 apiece. And then when they have, when time allows, they've been driving them themselves. The 6,500 that we're, we'll spend this year will be for those, for, to buy the, the individual piles and then to drive one or two for, for the new dinghy floats. Because it's a little more expensive to drive the ones that are structural than the ones that are aesthetic.
We have, we currently have 10, 10 pilings in stock, correct?
Yep.
That, that need to get done, and this will allow us to buy more and get them put in. The, the ones that are along the bulkhead are largely decorative. They, they don't really serve a function any longer. I mean, at one point, they served a function when big ships were tied up alongside and they rubbed up and down on them. Today, they're largely functional. The ones that are, the, the ones that are actually functional are the ones that we drive in, that hold the docks in place, will be the ones that we need to put in for the, the new dinghy float, which hopefully that's going to be, that's being built now, or in the-
Yeah, well, we need to, we need to put the floats back in to get the dimensions of what that's going to be. But that'll be this spring, so.
So the 1,200 and 7345, the 1,200 is adequate for what we want to do?
If we're, if we're just, if we're just looking to buy single, you know, oak pilings, yes.
Okay.
Yep. And which is, which we are, if, unless Public Works decided that we don't want to do.
So that's, that's not an LD1 cut, then? That's a, that's a discussion, and we can do it for that.
That's just a, yeah, that's a prudent, right, we can-
There's no sense in trying to buy more pilings, and we're not putting the ones in we've got.
That we can put them in, yeah.
One last question. Who is looking at the issue of the old stone wall on the ramp towards the highway, which seems to be more and more leaning out?
It is. That's a capital improvement budget, that is on the list.
Okay.
You mean, right under the bridge there, on the, to the-
No, 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 huh?
Almost at the-
On the ramp.
Where you launch the boat.
When you come down the ramp, the launch ramp, the, the stone wall on the side that's towards the highway has been leaning more and more out into the river and the ramp. And I, I mentioned that too.
Yeah, you did mention it.
I ran into Mike down there last fall, and he looked at it and said, oh, yeah. So it's, it seems to, my perception is it's moved at least another foot in, closer into the river.
Kind of lean, leaning on it.
It, it, just leaning, yeah.
That, that wall in general is on the capital improvement plane. And not, and not any specific point of it, just the whole section from, from the rip, from the-
From ridge down.
Ridge, yeah.
And you'll see the next line down, the harbor float replacement. Abby was trying to, trying to help cut the budget down a bit. And, you know, we, the harbor float reserve, we had calculated out, it, we should be depositing $19,000 in a year into that budget in order to be prepared to replace those floats, because we've got $250,000 worth of floats.
They haven't say that at least.
Yeah. And to put enough money, to start putting enough money away to, to maintain and repair and replace them as, as needed. And that's a place where I actually added $10,000 in that budget, because I, I didn't feel comfortable trying to short-change that because we'll end up having to pay for it later. So I put $10,000 back in there.
My hope was just that we could, you know, stretch that manufacturer longevity out of the, the floats and, you know, by doing, mainly yearly maintenance on them. But I mean, but that is what the-
We did that to get to the 19,000 number. We stretched out the, the years, as I remember, right, Megan? Yeah.
I'd be comfortable with that.
Yeah, we, we added extra years to get the number down under 20,000, because originally it was in the, it was quite a bit more than $20,000. And so we, Albert, you know, said, we, we'll have to make the, we'll have to make the floats last longer. And we did. And, you know, but if we, if we go any further, we'll have, be looking to try and make them last even longer than we should. So that was my, my attempt to just say, we need to pay attention to that, the capital, the harbor float reserve, because that is a substantial cost.
Anything else on the expense side? On the revenue side? I have a question about 0806 merchandise sales. I know this, this is hard because these, the season is split between two fiscal years, sort of thing. So do we anticipate we're going to meet the 6,000? Are we going to sell enough stuff before the, the 1st of July?
I'm thinking we need to, you know, sort of revamp our t-shirt styles. I think everybody's sort of saturated of the same style, maybe.
I've got about five of the same thing, so.
So, you know, I, I don't know if that's reflective of that. We did have a very slow July this year. I mean, inordinately slow. We had probably the best August I've ever seen. But July was, you know, June and July, I should say, didn't even start to get going until really August and September. So the answer is, I think we'll probably be a little low on that. But I am confident to leave the 6,000 that we can, you know, up our game a little bit.
And the winter boat storage number, 0819, are those revenues all in for the year? Are they all paid?
No, we're waiting on Dallas Fields, who's, who has a majority of, has not paid yet. So he needs to get, you know, we, we need to get that. So he, there's a, that's a, that's a fairly big chunk that might, that will put us over the, maybe even a little bit over the 7,500.
Over the 7,500. And then I guess the question for Rick is why the reduction from 7,500 to 6,000?
Because we, we're, actually, we have fewer boats going in there, correct? We've seen fewer and fewer boats going in?
We ha, um, we have, and we're, we're looking to sort of-
I don't know why.
Yeah, I'm not sure why that's in there, but that would be your-
I think it was just based on what had been collected somewhere.
So is it unreasonable that could, that could sit at the 7,500?
Actually, if I, I didn't know that, that we had that extra money coming in, so that-
Oh, you probably looked at what's collected, yeah.
So you could probably go back, you should go back up for that revenue.
And then my other question is Marine Park rental fees, 0823. We exceeded the budget last year with, and we, so we bumped the budget up this year for revenue. Is it up enough? Did we have anything extraordinary last year that led to the higher number? How does that all fit in with the idea that we weren't going to rent to any gigantic tent weddings that last for five days?
Right.
I think it's, you know, I think we've done, done pretty well with the rentals without having, you know, we have, I didn't get a single complaint this year-
No.
About the rentals. I think it all went really smoothly.
Cutting the, the size of the tent was really helpful.
Yeah.
You know, I thought all weddings just lasted for five days.
Problem is, the wedding didn't last for five days, but the tent did.
Yeah, right.
Exactly, yeah.
And made the whole park unusable.
I mean, I have a tendency to budget revenues conservatively, and then-
Okay.
Make everybody happy and say, we did a lot better. We got more revenue than we expected. But when you're trying to balance the budget, you know.
Anything else on harbor revenues?
Who is mainly lobster?
Go ahead, Stevie.
I just, I had a question, and my, my memory is not what it used to be. Back in 1415, and I, I sort of remember that discussion when the boat club, let's see, what is it? 0827, that, that lease was 13,000. And it's been now 1, 2, 3, this would be the fourth year, that it's only 6,500. Is there some reason, I mean, I'm sure that land-
I'm guessing that they never paid that much in one year.
They hadn't paid.
They probably hadn't, hadn't paid one year.
Oh, that's right.
So two payments came in in one fiscal year.
In the fiscal year, that's what happened.
But is there some reason, I'm sure the assessment of that property has gone up over the years.
That's one of the things, actually, the select board has asked the town manager to look into, is those leases are coming up for renewal.
Right.
I mean, because that affects-
It's a wealthy group of people.
It's a small group of, of Rockport residents too. And if they're getting that kind of a tax break-
No, it's not a tax break.
It's not a tax break. But I mean, if they're getting that kind of a break on that particular lease, which seems to me like that's a pretty good-
Good nice budget.
Rent le, or lease rate for what they're, for what they're getting. And for the fact that it is restricted, because it's a private club.
Right.
Which I used to belong to, so I'm not bad-mouthing. So I, but I, that is, it just seems like a real big, a real low number.
Yeah. As I say, the select board has asked the manager to, to look at those leases and, because I think it comes up for renewal this year.
Right, yeah. And you'll hear from them, they're, they're, they're going to say that the 6,500 is more than they, they can afford to pay, that they provide service to the town, that they provide sailing lessons for kids, and-
When does it come up? What, what month? The end of the year, the end of June?
We'll have to look at it. It's this year sometime. I don't know whether it's this season or-
Does it coincide with, with the people that, the lobster?
Yeah.
No, that's a different, that one's out, out a little bit. The lobster lease is another couple of years.
Oh, it is? Oh, okay.
No, but I mean, the same, they're all in the same month when they expire, right?
I don't think so.
No, not, not necessarily, no.
It's a.
Is that something that might be easier to, that way we don't overlook things if they're all out in June?
Yeah, but the boat club lease, when it comes up, it, you know, maybe I'll, I'll let you guys deal with it.
I know, the last time we renewed it, they all came in and, and actually, they, what they wanted last time was stability more than anything. They wanted a long-term lease so that they could plan for what their expenses would be over a certain number of years. They didn't want to be guessing every year as to what the lease was. I think that was their biggest request the last time. And so, you know, when it comes up again this time, you know, I think the select board will take a look at that and.
Is the Camden Yacht Club a comparable situation and what is their situation?
Their situation is a lump.
They're, that is owned by the town.
It's owned by the town.
Camden Yacht Club is owned by the town.
And it's rented to.
They pay a.
Camden Select Board has to meet in the yacht club clubhouse once a year to assert their squatting rights or something like that.
Is that true, really?
Yeah, they, they meet down there once a year. But yeah, that is owned by the town, so it's similar, it's a much bigger facility.
Yes, it is.
And there's a.
I'm just wondering if we, if we know what the, what the, what that facility, what Camden thinks that facility is worth. It's just, it's just a stake in the ground to think about.
Yeah, we could find out, yeah.
I don't see any reason not to give them the stability they're asking for, but the price seems a little bit low.
Well, we'll have to see, but that's all part of.
Give them stability by building in an increase.
Right.
Know what it is.
Yeah.
Well, this, I've sort of waited till the end here because, you know, the harbor's been kind of a pet bugaboo mine for a while. And if you look at the, the bottom, bottom line, the net harbor budget, you know, you go back, that it cost us thirty thousand, seventeen thousand, fourteen thousand. So we were making progress for a while in, in making the harbor that it was self, self-funding. And then it jumped up last year fifty-one thousand and this year we're looking at thirty-seven thousand. And again, I've expressed this, you know, I think that this ought to be a, a break-even proposition. Yeah, I, I think there's a lot of money on the harbor. I think, although not everybody, there are a lot of boat owners that are very expensive to maintain. I'm all for the people with kayaks and rowboats and stuff like that, that's great, you know, give them a break. But again, the idea that we kind of balance our budget for the harbor on the backs of people that, you know, may spend very, very little bit of time down there. So this year, the harbor committee did increase our harbor fees a little bit. But as I go through and look at them in perspective here, for instance, line zero eight zero eight on the moorings, did our, did the, did the increase that we do only garner us another thousand bucks?
It did because of previously miscalculated revenues. Prior to Megan coming along, the way that we calculated it was just, you know, we, it never went through. This year I went through after they, you made the change, you all made the change or the harbor committee made the change to increase it. I actually took the stack of bills and, and added each, each and everyone up with the price per foot because I used to just take an average, which ended up being like eight thousand dollars short. So that is a, that's a much, that is, that is the number of bills I sent out. There will be, that'll increase by, I would say, a thousand or so with a few turnovers that will happen. We'll, we'll make a little bit more there. But that, if you look, you know, in sixteen, seventeen, the actual collection was, was fifty thousand. So that's, I mean, that's based on, that revenue number is based on the actual bills that went out and that we'll receive back.
Well, that's disappointing to me and, you know, if I could go back and do it over again, I would have increased that fair amount more. Same thing about the tie-offs here, I mean, there's been no increase. Those things are highly desirable. Is that something that we increased this year? Obviously not.
No.
Sam, would you come up and grab a mic if you wouldn't mind because the folks at home. I know.
Sleeping baby?
She's asleep back there.
Oh, this is going to be, this is a first.
Shows the dedication of our town volunteers. But yeah, we want the, we want the folks at home to be able to hear.
Yeah, I just meant to say that we've been trying to slowly reduce the number of those tie-offs in favor of, of dinghy spots. So we've, you know, sort of focused on, you know, convincing people to take, to take an alternative there and try to shorten the waitlist for the alternative.
And if I recall, last year, we, we decided, in the budget process last year, we were going to put away some money for a dinghy dock and we decided, let's spend it all at once and then give people an opportunity to, to sign up for multiple years and guarantee a spot. How did that go over? I see the revenue numbers aren't here yet, but is that coming up this spring?
When we, when we build them, I'll put that out there to folks. I mean, because it'll get built this year and then we'll build them.
Because that's why the six thousand dollar budget number was higher last year on that one is because we were going to offer to, to let people prepay for a couple of years and guarantee them a spot in order to pay for the dinghy dock all in one year.
Right.
That's the oh eight two four?
Yeah, and that's why that number is down because we were anticipating. And I, like I say, I don't know, I guess we don't know yet how that's going to play out.
We don't know how it'll play out and we don't know, you know, if, if people will go for that or not. I mean, I've spoken to some people that are willing just so they don't have to show up on July, on June first at my office and get a sticker and they get three years out of it. You know, it's kind of a program that I couldn't really instill until we have those built, so.
And those will go in this spring, that's.
As soon as we build them.
I don't know if you caught earlier, Abby was saying that they can't really start building those and driving the pilings until the docks go in and then they have, they measure and they'll have to measure and figure that out.
We were hoping for the end of this month, but the snow hasn't been, you know, they're still snowed in.
There's still ice in the harbor.
Yeah.
Is the, is the line zero eight twenty, zero eight twenty-one only because the rest of the year? I mean, there's no money budgeted. But yeah, we've got revenue in. The previous years indicate more than what you've got predicted for the upcoming year.
Not really because last year was four hundred and seventy-five dollars for electricity and wa, I mean, water was a little bit more, but.
Yeah, but there's.
And that's a lease, that's based on the mainly lobster lease and I don't, I think that's.
Oh, that's, that is, okay.
That got put in the, I'm, I'm pretty sure that that got just.
The two blank lines together for the budgeted number on eight twenty and eight twenty-one?
I don't remember.
Is that reimbursement from the?
It goes into the mainly lobster lease, that's what, that's what, it got separated out, but.
So that's not the fees that the boaters are paying for their hookup when they tie up?
No, we just, we've been putting that in with dockage. That goes in with.
So that's somewhere else?
The electrical for the, for the, for the, the float service, you mean? For when people come overnight dockage?
Yeah, I mean, electricity reimbursement, the water reimbursement.
That's the mainly lobster, those are the fishermen that, that pay that.
Where does Twigs, where does that come in?
They do not, we, they pay, actually, that's, that's them too. They pay, I think, a hundred and fifty for water and two hundred dollars for power. I'm sorry, this is new for me, so I don't know how to make it stop.
Did the, the service van, the food van that was there last year, did they pay anything? Where would that show up?
That would be in the rent, park rental fees.
And they did have, they did have an electrical. Fee last year on top of their.
Who's, who sets the prices? Is it the park, the?
The select board ultimately.
Who, who, let me ask the question that I really want to ask, which is how often do we relook at what we're doing and decide whether we, when it's time for a three percent raise in, in, in things like the rest of the world does?
The fees are set annually.
By who?
The harbor committee recommends to the select board and they did this year.
Do they, do we recommend, do they recommend consistently that things be raised every year?
They haven't been, but this year they did. So this year, and Doug was, Doug can probably speak to that more than I can because he was instrumental in that.
Good.
Well, yeah, I mean, I did, I, again, I feel strongly that the harbor should be a zero bottom line for us and worked very closely with Sam and, and Abby and the harbor committee and we did make these changes. And again, it's just a little discouraging for me that we're still thirty-seven thousand bucks short.
I presume that we charge pleasure users a higher effective rate than working users.
Not necessarily.
Well, I'll make a couple of points in that regard. It, it's similar, I would say. Currently, the commercial users are getting a pretty big break on some things. They're, you know, guaranteed a lot more access, whereas the recreational users, you know, aren't guaranteed dock access, you know, whenever they want it. But, but I'll also make the point that I made to the select board during a presentation a couple of months ago, which was that the town really is subsidizing, you know, businesses by, you know, by giving a, a very low lease to mainly lobster. You know, each one of those fishing boats, Abby could probably tell you more accurately, how many? Fifteen or something?
There's fifteen, yeah, fourteen total.
You know, our, our, you know, small businesses and, and beyond that, there's, oh, you know, three, maybe four boatyards that operate, you know, really off of the, the town ramp and the town docks to do their commissioning and decommissioning. And that's a, you know, speaking as someone who owns a boatyard, you know, we pay, we pay a lot to the town to have the ability to, to do that, to do commissioning and decommissioning on the water and it's valuable.
I think you, I think you misunderstand me, Sam.
Yeah.
I'm arguing that the, that the, the professionals.
Yep.
Should be given a discount over the pleasure boats.
I understood that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm actually arguing the reverse.
Yes, you are. So, but you're arguing in a way that I'm, that I'm getting confused. But my, but my, my question still remains is basically, how often do we, we look at these things?
Yep.
And how often do we reassess what competitive harbors are doing and where we are in the realm of things? The harbor is an incredible attraction for the town and the fact that it's a working harbor, to me, makes it much more attractive than simply a pleasure boat harbor.
Yep.
And so I'd like the mix of businesses and, and marinas and, and pleasure boats to remain a healthy mix for, a healthy mix for everybody. But like Doug, I think, I think that the, I'd like to see the harbor closer to a break-even. I don't care if it doesn't break even. I'd like to see, for example, a, a real solid look at solar power since electricity costs is, are one of our bigger expenses down there. And the plan, the capital improvements plan for the harbor running out over a few years is really quite impressive and I think quite nice. So I would like to keep the harbor alive, alive and well.
I think that's a big part of the increase over the last couple of years is those deposits to the reserve accounts. That's, that's a, nineteen thousand dollars a year, that's almost all of the.
Yes.
The increase in the expenses of the harbor. And I'm, I mean, it would be nice if the harbor was break-even, but I'm not, I'm not hell-bent on having it get there because I do think that there is, I mean, I agree that there, there are some people in town who use it way more than other people in town do. But still, we are providing a resource for the person who lives on the other side of Route one who is, you know, maybe a lower-income Rockport resident. They, they come down and use that, that harbor park and have lunch down there with their kids and things like that. So there is some value, I think, to the town in doing that. I wish we were closer to break-even, but it's, that's not a particular goal of mine. I think we should maximize the revenue stream from the harbor and I think those who use it a lot should pay their share. And I think this year with Doug and Sam's help, I think we moved more in the right direction with it. I think there's still more room to go there personally.
I think the, the place that that, the most likely place for increased revenue, which is a little bit of a challenge, but it's, it's disappointing to me that the overnight docking, that we only have revenues of nine thousand dollars for overnight docking. Granted, you know, I'm a boater, I know Rockport Harbor is not the best harbor to be at the dock if it's blowing out of the south, southeast. But a lot of the other times, it's, it's, it's a nice, it's a nice harbor, it gets a little bit of roll, but it's not like Camden's roll. I mean, I have a mooring in the Outer Harbor in Camden and I can't even stay on the boat there in the summertime. But, you know, the overnight dockage, you know, we've got two hundred and, how many, three hundred feet of dock now? Three hundred feet of dock space and it's rare that it's all full at night. And if we were, if we were fifty percent full every night, you'd see that number jump from ten thousand to fifty thousand pretty quickly. But it's marketing it, getting people used to coming there as an alternative to Camden. It's, it's, it's not Camden, it's not the Camden experience, but it's also, it's not Camden, it's not the Camden experience. So for some people, it's quieter, they're, you know, they don't want to be at the, you know, they spend a couple of days at the dock at Camden. It's too hustle, bustle, too much activity. And so our docks are a quieter experience and, but we don't seem to have broken into that market of getting those boats in here that are going to pay the big dollars.
And I think that'll take time. I mean, because I see some of my clients.
That's a place where you'd see an increase.
Coming into Camden and I always tell my clients when they're tied up in can and say, hey, you know, we've got an awful nice harbor just down the road here, you could come over here and tie up and, and they're. It will take time because a lot of these people who come in the, in the big expensive boats, they have a routine that they do every year and it's, it'll take some time.
I mean, we have cameras around, I mean, if the camera were such on the front of the harbor master's office, why can't we put that or link it to the town website? I mean, you know, that will help.
I mean, the other interesting thing that I know Steve does in, in Camden is for the shoulder seasons, he.
Oh, thanks for blowing that off, that's all right.
He had somebody come in and he had a program where people who came in, not in the high season, but in the shoulder season. And he said, hey, you, you come in, you tie up, you pay the fee, but if you show me a receipt from a Camden restaurant, then I'll give you a little break on your, on your mooring fees. And then that, what that does is lets people know that the harbor is there, it encourages the businesses in town and stuff like that. It does put a little dent in the revenue for, but a short-term one, I think, that so that people may come back and do it again.
We also.
Could I at least get a grunt about, that does have some merit before you jump off to something else? I mean.
The camera that, the camera that there doesn't, isn't really function.
Well, that's what I said, if it works, so it doesn't work, so why don't we?
But that's on the list for, we have a possibility of a grant to replace.
Cascade Foundation.
Yeah, for the next grant round to upgrade the cameras.
And we can get that perhaps hooked up to the town website?
Yeah.
Do we now have the weather station hooked up to the town website?
To the town website, Diane?
No, it's to the har, it's to the harbor website.
Yeah, it's through the, yeah, on the harbor website.
So, but the marketing of the dockage, the dockage, I mean, three hundred feet of dock space at, what do we charge a foot?
Two dollars a foot for the big, big girls, three, three dollars a foot.
Yeah, a hundred foot, a hundred foot, foot boat coming in, it's four hundred bucks a night. We do get some from, you know, Steve and Jimmy in Camden?
That's where we get the big boats because we're really not on the radar of the big boats.
If they, if they, if they can't get into Camden, Jimmy and Steve will send them here and say, you might want to try Rockport. And they get here and then they say, it's really nice, it's quiet, we've got, you know, showers right there, we've got everything right there. But that's a, that's a place where we could see it up, we should see an uptick in revenues.
And we have, you know, in fourteen fifteen, we made three thousand, now we're looking at ten, so we keep building, hopefully keep building.
When will you find out about the grant from Cascade?
I think it's after this fiscal year, next, after July one. Was that what he was, I mean, we can't guarantee that, but that's.
I didn't say, I just asked when you would find out about it.
He, he was, that was one of his interests, was getting the harbor cameras up and running. And the experience with the new cameras that we've been putting up around the town office and at Route seventeen and ninety, those, those cameras are extremely affordable and the, the quality of the cameras are, is, is excellent. And they're a lot less money than the other cameras, so. So, I mean, Doug, I think that's a place, if, you know, it's marketing, getting the boat owners to know that they can come in here, we've got a nice friendly harbor, our price per foot is a dollar under, dollar under other
Dollar plus, yeah.
Other places. We also have, one of the things that we've been doing is for mooring holders, people that are, I think we're still doing that, if you're a mooring holder and there's nobody on the docks at four in the afternoon or something
After four, yeah.
After four, you can come in and spend the night for half, half price.
Dollar a foot.
A dollar a foot.
And that's Rockport residents or mooring holders, residents and or mooring holders.
So if, you know, you've got a thirty-foot boat, and you want to come into the dock and hang out at the dock, it's thirty bucks for the night, and you can go up to the restaurant and, to try and get, you know, more use of the docks, because that, you know, that number could easily go from ten thousand to fifty thousand dollars with just a change in the way, you know, people work. I mean, it's not easy. I mean, Rockland has a, you go down to Rockland docks, and Rockland docks sit large, you know, they don't, they're not full all the time. Camden's docks are, it's Camden, so their docks are
Could we
full a lot.
just send out a press release to some of the marine publications? Now, I mean, now would be the time to do it, to hit, like, the Point East
Yeah.
that little newspaper thing, and even some of the bigger magazines, saying, you know, Rockport announces its rates for dockage have not increased this year, and here's all the things you can get, showers and electric cookup and pump out and all that kind of stuff.
I've talked to Point East about getting in there in June, I think, June, you know, because she would be, but I could look into
And, and like I say, if you do it as a press release, you don't, you don't have to pay for it.
Anything else on the harbor? Nothing? Okay, I'm going to suggest that we have Ben come up now, because we have, planning community development, but that's just Rick, because we don't have anybody else here, and we can let Ben go a little bit earlier and get the library and the library building done. Tom, do you want to come sit at the table?
I'm good.
You came in and I saw you get your dinner, it looks like you're done with your dinner, so if you want to come sit over here, feel free.
Oh, I'm not shy.
Oh, come on.
I know you, yes, but I just wanted, I didn't want you to think we were ignoring you or anything like that.
No, Mike will be brought to me, I'm, I'm still in platter.
He deserves gold, Jeff.
So we'll do library, page two thirteen.
Oh, home sweet home.
So with the library budget, the same thing applies, all of the things that are in gray, I'm still not sure I understand what the blue is, but all the things that are in gray are things that are reimbursed from the library committee at a hundred percent. So, you know, all the items that are in gray are reimbursed back from the library committee. So the town pays for all the staff, staff benefits, basically the maintenance of the building and all of that stuff, and the library committee pays for all of the programming and training and operational things that are in the library budget. It was helpful, we did this about three or four years ago, just to make it, because it was confusing about who's paying for what, because, you know, so many lines of this budget are paid for by the library committee. So it gives you an idea, so there's not a lot of changes. Actually, I think your bottom line number went down, was it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, your bottom line went down, budget went down nine percent. I think, is that right, that's right?
Yeah.
Yeah, the goal here is, you know, we're trying, we're trying to build a new library, and so the goal here is to be as fiscally conservative here as we can. You know, I will say that I'm, I'm really proud of the work the library does, they do a great job, we have a great staff down there, they just continue to chug away down there with great programming, great ideas, good participation, and, you know, I'm really proud of the work that they do. So, you know, there's not much change in the budget, I think, you know, I've got a couple of things highlighted here. The electrical repair line thirty-six fourteen, you, you'll see a reduction there, it's a pretty substantial reduction, but that, a lot of that has to do with moving into the new building, there was a lot of things that we had to change and fix to get it library quality stuff. We're not going to have to do that again, so that electrical repair and maintenance line has dropped. And again, the, but again, the other one is general repair and maintenance is the same thing, we've done a lot of work, I can't remember why we haven't spent anything out of that general repair line. Have we spent something out of the thirty-six twenty-three?
Yeah, I think that was for the lighting fixtures.
That, and it hasn't shown up in the
It was after
After January, yeah, we had, we had to go in and change a bunch of lighting, the lighting fixtures, because they were buzzing and
They were the twelve, or the
They were twelve-foot long
Ones that you can't get anymore.
You can't get the parts for.
Yeah.
Have we, have we ever been reimbursed for the, the water damage stuff yet?
They, he ended up claiming it on his insurance, and the library committee paid our portion of the deductible.
We voted just shortly after you guys learned about it, that we wanted to just pay the thousand, because we thought it'd be goodwill.
Yep, thank you. But they, he, he did finally, after a lot of persuading, decide to put it on his insurance. He said, I've never had an insurance claim before, and I, well, that's what your insurance is for, you know.
The other, the other question I had backing up to the top again, was the twenty-one fifty-five, the overtime, I know when I've done the warrants before, I have seen overtime booked out too.
They don't typically take overtime, they usually take comp time.
Yeah, they get comp time.
Well, this was, I have seen overtime on the sheets before, and that's why I was wondering, and I think it was Ben, maybe, your other Ben?
Yeah, it wouldn't be him.
No, 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 obviously. Well, I know I've seen it before, so I'm just wondering
I mean, the only time that I could think that we, we would have had overtime, and I still think it was comp time, was when we did the move.
Well, I'm just wondering whether it was sort of like Abby does, where you
Yeah, that would have been in last year.
You juggle things around and give them a
No, for full-time employees, I would put it in overtime.
If I see it again, I'll let you know.
Yeah, let me know, I mean, because they, they take comp time.
I don't recall ever seeing someone in the library take overtime.
I couldn't dig up my copy of the auditor's report in time for the meeting tonight, so maybe Megan or somebody. There was a paragraph in there about the library and the cost in the library, just, it's a big amount of money, and somehow they felt the need to tell us to pay attention or something like that, do you remember the?
Their concern was more about how their warrant process works and how their cash is handled, more than their necessary budget. And we're working with the lawyer, with Phil now, to try to come up with a way that will both satisfy the lawyer and, and the auditor, and satisfy the agreement that was made when the library committee was established.
Remind me what the question is, though, here.
It's accounting procedures, as I recall. I mean, right now, for example, the library committee has a warrant, and then they have a checking account that they write a check from and sign the check from that account for the endowment, and the auditors are saying that's, technically, that's town money, and that the town treasurer, who is Rick, should be signing those checks.
They were, they were very against the practice of handwriting checks, they said that's where, they were not alluding to fraudulent activity, but that is a place where fraudulent activity would happen, is when you're still handwriting checks and not running it through an accounting software. So those are all concerns that they had. The original agreement set up, when the library committee was established, said something about the select board signing off on their warrants, which that doesn't happen. There, we learned with Phil the other day that the original agreement says that the library committee will actually reimburse for half of the library director's salary, which hasn't happened as long as I've been here.
As long as I've been here.
So we're trying to weed through some of that stuff and make sure that the intent of how the library committee was established is maintained, but also make sure that we're satisfying the requirements of the auditor and the lawyer at the same time.
So I just found it, I think, where Smith, the auditor, said that there was an error in over-assessing stemmed from a warrant article that didn't pass, but was included in the municipal appropriations.
Yeah, that's not
That's a separate issue.
That's a separate
But those were their main concerns with the library and how the, the library cash is handled.
What was the part about the library director's salary?
In the original agreement, that was time back in, like, nineteen eighty or whenever the library committee was established, in that agreement, it says that the library committee will reimburse fifty percent of the library director's salary.
And someplace that changed?
Yeah. And that was back, probably when the only employee of the library was the library director, it wasn't anybody else, it's before my time.
If anybody knows, it would be Steve.
Eighty-six, because I ran for the library committee in eighty-seven, I think we had a different date for town meetings at that point, and I don't remember, because I was treasurer too for a while.
Right, they used, there was, there's language in there that says the library and the library committee will have their own treasurer.
We do.
So that is potentially thirty thousand bucks there, right?
Correct. And
Times thirty-five years.
Our auditors are concerned that the way the library committee was established, that they don't have, that agreement doesn't have the authority to direct a deputy treasurer for the town, which that agreement directs that the library committee will select a treasurer, which will then be
Deputy
Deputy treasurer for the town, and our auditors are saying that, that agreement doesn't have the statute authority to dictate who the deputy treasurer of the town is.
Nor, nor does our lawyer feel, feel that way either. So we have some cleanup to do.
There's some work to do, there's no, there was no inference of any wrongdoing.
No, 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 but, but
But they were saying
Can we take thirty thousand, though, this year, out of our
Well, it's gonna have to, we're gonna have to do some more research, because if there were any, ever any amendments made to that, we haven't found those amendments, and I would assume that if all this time, that the finance director or the treasurer of the town at some point would have been collecting that money if that was the agreement, so I don't understand, if that was the agreement, why it would have stopped. So I'm hoping that there's some amended agreement or something that happened that would have alleviated that or changed it.
I just have a quick question for Ben. At the next meeting, could you bring the agreement?
I have a copy of it, I can send it out.
Would you?
Yeah.
Thank you, I'd like to look at it.
I certainly, excuse, I certainly wouldn't, you know, say, let's go back and collect over the years if there isn't a thing.
Gee, that's nice.
But if, you know, if indeed that's how it's supposed to be, then I would be all for putting it in this year's budget.
The next question, then, is, does the agreement say that the library committee has to reimburse all these other costs?
Uh, yes.
It does?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's, there's whole language about what the library committee was supposed to be responsible for.
And I think, you know, as you start going through it, I mean, this document was created in nineteen eighty.
Right.
And, you know, at that time, they were not considering internet fees, web posting fees, some other stuff, you know
Which we still do.
Right, it, so there's been some changes, and the, the agreement hasn't kept up, hasn't kept up with what is actually happening over time.
Except without, without knowing the actual language of the agreement, I mean, if the agreement stipulates what the town is going to pay for and says the library committee will pay the rest, then I don't care about the internet fees or the web hosting or anything like that. We need to see the agreement, and it would be, I wonder if all the library committee's minutes are available somewhere.
It should be.
Probably.
It should be, yeah.
The, the other thing, you keep talking about the agreement, and I, there were numerous agreements, there was the vote that set up the library committee, but, and then the nineteen eighty, I don't know if, because I don't think Margie, or Margie Dodge, had become a department head, that was, that's separate from that nineteen eighty agreement, is it not?
No.
Because the library committee used to pay all the bills.
Right.
Everything, they paid a hundred percent of the library director's salary.
I move.
No, but, but, so, because I remember those, and Don Willard was town manager when all these changes, and he was quite taken aback when he did his first budget, assuming that that money, the library endowment, was the town's money, and so he prepared his budget based on
It was Don, Don Willard?
Don Willard, Don Willard.
He did the town budget, assuming that it was the town, and he was about a million short.
I think.
Right, and that was, I think he came the year before I did, and so he, that was when the town did take over paying, because the library director had no benefits, her salary was absolutely insane.
And our intention is not to
No, I know.
charge the library committee more, our intention is to clean up the document and make sure that everyone is on the same page in terms of who's supposed to be responsible for signing the warrants, who, who is supposed to be responsible for signing the checks and discharging those, and if the library committee is supposed to operate as its own entity, then they need to set up their own 501(c)(3), they need to get their own tax ID number, and right now, they operate all of that under the town, and that's where the auditor's concerns came from.
Yeah, the auditor basically said to us, you gotta do one or the other.
Right.
You're either, you're in for a penny, in for a pound, as you say, you're either a town department, and you abide by the town rules, and the treasurer signs the checks, and they run through the town accounting, or you become a separate 501(c)(3) and you can direct your own finances at that point. And I think that, I mean, their, their concerns are, I mean, it's the right ti, the time to address this is when you're not having a problem, because if a problem arises at some point, then it's too late. And I think, you know, we have to look at the whole thing, and, and if the agreement was they should pay half the library director's salary, then we have to look at that, both in terms of the agreement, but also in terms of the status of the endowment. If paying half the library's salary will, will drain that endowment in five years, then that's not something that's probably in the best interest of the town.
This is, as a committee member for the library, this is slightly concerning, that this is the first I've heard of it, that we haven't been told that this was a thing that was happening.
Anne was, I believe, I think Anne got an email on the auditor situation.
Like the, the library director's salary thing, we haven't talked about that.
I knew that till tonight.
I have never heard that, I've never read it.
We just had that conversation, what, yesterday?
With the lawyer.
Yesterday with the lawyer, and he's the one that actually brought up the library director's salary portion and
I'm not saying it's not a thing, but it's just, I would like to be involved in the conversation as a committee member.
Well, Anne has been going through this process with us.
Megan, can, can you just give me, because I have all those historical documents, copies of, and as many thousands of times as I've read them, starting back in eighty-six.
Does Ben have all of those? Can you get copies of that information?
I think the information we have was provided by Kate Monroe.
And do you know what it was from, you know, like
I can forward you the, the document.
If you have anything, if you have anything else, Stevie?
I have these three things that
Yeah, if you have anything else that kind of clarifies
I would like to look at the stuff that you guys are looking at, just for my own peace of mind.
Yes, if you could send me a PDF, Megan?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, back to this year's library budget, any more, any more questions? Okay, then library building, page two thirty-five. It's not letting me open up my budget. Where's library building? What? Go to you.
And this is a
This is just for the
Just, just the life support on the old building, basically.
So, I said it last year, and I'll say it again this year, why are we paying two thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars to keep up a building that we're gonna tear down anyways? Why not just get rid of it?
I'll let anybody else who wants to.
I, I don't think you want to tear down the building until you've made a decision what you're gonna do, with, my advice is you don't tear it down until you've made a decision what to do with the, you know, what we're gonna do with the library. You know, once that vote is taken, then I'll be, I'll be, the board can come forward, but I, I'm not gonna rake the recommendation to tear down the building until we've, we've decided to build the new one. Once, once we pass that bond, I'll, you know, I'll be the first one to say, let's tear down that old building, and
That property, the two, the, the major portion of that, more than two-thirds of it, is brush cutting, and you may very well tear down that building, but you're still gonna have to cut the brush.
Yeah.
So, we're talking about eight hundred bucks.
There might be more brush.
Doesn't seem like it got done last year, so what's another year?
It's another point. If and when the town votes to have a library built If and when the town votes to have a library built.
When?
On what budget will that construction expense and donations, where will all of that live? Under the library's budget?
We haven't figured that piece out yet.
Probably it would be a one-time budget for construction, and then, and then the maintenance would pass to this budget, I would think.
The library, the library building budget.
What will happen is, if the library vote gets passed, all the expenditures go through the bond process. So there's no real, like, budget for that, because once the bonds passed, approved, they understand that the bond is supposed to be expended for the library building itself. So the bond will actually have its own budget, per se.
Okay.
Not something that has to be approved again and appropriated again by the voters of the town.
Okay.
Then what will happen, then, then what will happen is, once that has been passed, we will get rid of this one Lime Rock Street budget altogether. And it will go back into the library like it was before.
Let me ask one further question. A million and a half dollars or thereabouts will have to be raised. Under whose auspices and under whose control?
We're working on that.
That, that piece is the piece that we're working.
That would be the thing that you would need a five oh one C three, four, that comes under the town.
And that is basically what generated this whole concern to begin with.
What happened to Tom? Did Tom take on?
Jacket's still there.
Jacket's still here.
Linda's gone too, in case you hadn't noticed. But her jacket's still there.
Oh. But backing up just a tad, Tracy Murphy spent literally days in the, working with Linda and going through all of the old records.
Shall I go find the town clerk and question?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, she did some research looking at the town reports, I remember, because I.
Yeah, Tracy did, Tracy did a lot of work and a lot of research on, on this whole question of, you know, how it got formed and what the rules were. She did an amazing amount of work back, and I can't even remember what, what the reason was. It was before your time, I think.
Yeah, I don't.
But she spent, literally spent days at that back desk going through old records, old minutes, finding stuff.
She did a lot of work on the deeds, too. That was part of it.
Yep.
Speaking of deeds, do we ever clear the BACH deed?
No.
Not yet.
That would be something for the library committee meeting.
Did you know about the, the site of the library where the, the library, that used to be called Tavern Lot?
Oh, really? Yeah. Because it was a tavern and a hotel.
The big hotels.
Okay. Anything else on the library building budget? If not, we can jump back to playing at community development. Page one oh three.
I guess that's a good thing.
Yeah, thank you, Ben. I'd take that, I'd take that and run.
Well, have a wonderful night, everybody.
As far as I can tell, Ben, we're still gonna pay your salary.
Well, thank you.
Somebody is.
Thank you.
At least half of it.
So where is he?
Cause I'm only one.
Assistance, fire, keep going. One oh three, one oh four, is the page number, if that helps.
So the planning, as you, as you're well aware, the planning director has left the building. So, we don't have the planner here to go through the budget that was developed, but it, it remains the, there's a budget still there for a planning, planning and community development director, salary, administrative assistant, CEO, video tech for their meetings, all of the stuff. If you go down to the purchased and, and contracted services, is computer software licenses. It's that thirty fifteen is for the Esri software, which is the GIS software that we use. The web hosting is the increase again in the map geo, which we've seen in the other budgets. You saw it in public works and in, in planning for the map geo increase, cost of map geo and increase for GOS, GIS services. Under miscellaneous, miscellaneous professional services, thirty sixty, there's ten thousand dollars in there for the comp plan review. As you, you remember, we're doing the, the review now. And then when it comes to the rewrite, where, that'll be next year of what, what need, the sections that need to be rewritten. That money is in there to hire a consultant to come in and help with that. And that's, the estimate for that is ten thousand dollars. And then that we also had and left in there, there's a five thousand dollars in there for some outside assistance for planning for use of the RES site, to do some design and engineering and whatever work for moving that prod, that concept forward.
Do we have a concrete plan for, no pun intended, for developing a master plan for the, the RES? That's what this money is for.
This money's for, is to start.
Is that on the schedule, or?
It's something, it was, the answer is no. But we do need to think about it at some point.
To have some money there to, to have, you know, have something to start with.
Yep.
Miscellaneous board expense, civil engineer, that one, that's, that has an offsetting revenue. We haven't used it, but it's one of those things that if we, if we are gonna have, as part of the site plan review process or anything, that there's requirement for an outside civil engineer, there's an expense there. And then the, the petitioner or the applicant would be paying that fee. So, we haven't used it yet, but you can see back a few years ago that there was money collected for that. So we just haven't had to use that so far this year. You see a reduction in advertising, you know, just because we're not using it and I didn't think we needed to get into a lot more advertising. Computer repair and maintenance, there's three computers that are, that we're responsible for in the planning office. There's the, the desktop Scott's computer and then the lap, and the laptop in that office. And one of the challenges here is when you get down to revenues. We have not seen the revenues that we, we've seen a steady decline in revenues here. And we honestly don't see, is he making faces at me?
I think I keep hitting my arm on the keyboard here.
Yeah. And we don't see those revenues coming up fast. I would like to see those revenues coming in, but, you know, we, I, I'd rather budget conservatively on revenues. And if we get more money coming in, we say, great, we have more money coming in. But to, to fall short on revenues is, it hurts us more than just planning, planning the right way to begin with.
Megan, has there been any permit fees since the end of the year? And that R O two hundred line, is that?
Uh, some, but not a lot.
So, so it's that fourteen six sixty is.
Yeah, cause the winters are really slow.
Right, right.
And we, typically, you'd start to see some of those permit fees now as build, as people are planning for building, but we're not seeing that either. And that.
I haven't seen the Mar, I haven't seen the March numbers yet, because March isn't over, but I think they had like seven or eight permits for the month of February.
Yeah, it's, it's very, very slow.
Couple of questions, one comment, a couple of questions. The, the question is, who, under the administrative assistant, refresh me, who does Hannah work for and who does Molly work for?
Hannah is planning and assessing, and Molly is finance and town office. However, that might be how it's broken out by the budget, but they do a lot of collaboration. If Hannah's out for whatever reason, Molly can step in and help with Hannah's stuff and vice versa.
Yeah. My other question is, or just a comment would be, how, how close are you in the hiring process? And, and from my own personal view, not those of any other board member, I would say hold off until we make a decision.
Yeah, not, not, we haven't even, we've just started collecting resumes and we haven't even started, we haven't even scheduled interviews yet.
What's your planned deadline, or?
Well, after you make your, you, you, we won't be doing that before.
And my last comment.
I mean, just to, let me, there's two reasons. One is because of the comments that, that I heard at the other budget meeting. And the other is, we can use a little bit of break in our budget, because revenues haven't, haven't been coming in the, at the level we thought. And having, not paying out that salary for a little bit helps save us some money and keeps, we'll get the budget to come in where it should be, rather than under budget, over budget.
Yeah, my, my last one, thank you, is, last year, we trained a person to help out in, in the absence of Scott or, or Jamie. And there was no money in the budget, apparently, for that person. And I think there was five thousand that wasn't there or something. So, is there money for that person that we've already helped train?
You're talking about the alternate CEO?
Right. Is there that in there somewhere? I mean, it's a shame to put money into him and get him so fired down and then not use him. Especially if we go in a different direction, that's all.
You know, I don't know where that money was coming from, but we don't have the inspections to do. You know, the, the, the number of inspections we're doing, you know, is pretty minimal.
The department head did not request that we put money in there for an alternate. And in my opinion, when, when and if you hire a new planning and community development director, that person should by default be the alternate.
Well, so was Jamie, but that didn't happen, so that ought to be another conversation, but thank you.
Where did you see the job description that went out, that you're collecting resumes based on?
Online.
In the town's website?
Thank you.
And it's not, it's not like we're getting overwhelmed with applicants.
I wouldn't think so.
You know, we have, we have a few, we have several, probably three or four, that on paper, they, you know, they look, they look good. But until you get into the interview process, you don't know. But, you know, I was not in a huge hurry, regardless of the budget process or not, because we can use a little bit of buffer in this budget. And, and not paying out that salary for, you know, a few months isn't gonna hurt us.
But do you anticipate having somebody in place July one?
If you give, if you give me a budget.
Okay.
So, yeah, when, when and where do we have that discussion of, you know, do we need a full-time planner and?
Is that our April ninth or something? Isn't that our?
Well, we, I mean, we can throw it around a little bit now, if, if you want to. I mean, when we did a salary, or I did a salary survey many, a few years ago, before any of the current board members were on, one of the things I discovered was that Rockport is the smallest town in Maine that has a planner. So we're right on the cusp. And the tough part about that is that you can't get somebody who's had on-the-job training, is looking to move up. And so we've actually been fairly lucky, in one case incredibly lucky, with the people that we've gotten. But it is tough, because, you know, for example, if we're looking for a fire chief or a police chief or, or a town clerk or something like that, often you can find somebody who's worked at a smaller town and is looking to move up and have a little more responsibility and make a little more money or something like that. But you can't do that with a planner, at least not in Maine. The other thing I'll say is that we have to be careful of the reasons we need a professional planner. And one of the reasons that we need a professional planner is that our planning board and our zoning board of appeals need professional guidance. You don't have that at your peril. And all you have to do is look a little bit away to see what happens if that happens in the town of Appleton. When they had, they had a bad decision made by their zoning board, it went out litigation for many, many years and cost them hundreds of thousands of dollars in legal fees. And so we have to be a little bit careful of that. Now, do we need somebody full-time? That's a question that I think is up, how, it could be.
How receptive was Camden, or have you talked to them yet about?
No, I have not.
They just hired a brand-new one.
They just.
Well, I know, but that's, I mean, if we're gonna be having that, and that might be part of our conversation to say, hey, okay, let's try it for a year.
Initially, that was, you know, she was receptive to talking about that.
Well, that might be a good idea to have some type of a dollar figure to, for us to, to be prepared to go with or not.
In the area, are there people who can work part-time for us? I mean, I think of the Jane LaFlores and, you know, Jamie's still in the area.
Yeah.
If you need someone, can we find them, or is it someone that?
Yes, there are, I mean, there are contracts services. I mean, we did, I did get a price from the former planner that was here, that he sent in, you know, what, what it would cost, you know, what part, doing a part-time planning position. But it was basically the same as what we're paying for part-time.
I think.
But you, you don't get, because you're paying that to another agency that, that would do that work. And I don't, I think somebody like the name you mentioned, you know, you, you could get some time, but she doesn't work, you know, she doesn't work cheap.
The number I had gotten, I think, through Bill Nellpar's outfit where Jamie is, was seventy dollars an hour. And I mean, even at fifteen hours a week, whether they work more or less than that, it's still thirty thousand less than what you pay with wages and benefits.
But you do, you know, you do have somebody here part-time. And the, the thing to keep in mind too, is this is planning and community development. So there's, there's the planning piece, which is different than the, the community development, which is grant writing and all of that stuff. The plant.
I don't have a feeling that we got a lot in grants. I mean.
We didn't.
No.
I mean, I know the fire chief were.
The prior planner, we, we did pretty well with grants, but in the last couple of years. And some of that is that the grant-making environment is different than it was a few years ago.
Wasn't Jamie already contracting a lot of the grants anyways?
Through Bill?
Yeah.
No, not a lot of them, no.
Not really. I mean, part of it is that if you get the right person in that position, they can smell grants. And they're gonna go out there and they're gonna, you know, they're gonna be very well aware of, of the various possibilities and things like that. But it's, it's, it's a rare person who has that skill, quite honestly.
My, my gut feeling is that potentially you may be able to, to contract out the planning and community development services. And, you know, it's tou, it's tough to find somebody that can do both, because they're not the same. And you might be able to do, contract out and get two, two different people to, to do planning and community development. But my gut is that you'll end up spending close to what we're spending now. But you might get, you know, I don't know, it depends on what's out there for other applicants, but you might get better service if you have, you know, somebody who specializes in strictly planning and somebody who specializes in strictly community development. One grant person was over in Rockland.
Oh, Rodney.
Rodney.
Lynch.
Rodney Lynch was great at writing grants. He, doing grant work. He was not a planner. And, you know, one of the complaints that they got in, that they had in Rockland was, he, he brought in so much money that the, the amount of time it took to manage the money, they didn't.
Well, that's a tough problem to have.
But that was one of the complaints, is that.
Wasn't, didn't he fill in here for us too?
He did.
Yeah. In, in the interim between.
Yeah. And he did some work for us, yep. And so he specializes very strictly on grant writing. And, and if I had to say, you know, the previous planner, community development director, his strength was in community development and grant writing. And he, you know, he was really, I think, he was stronger that way than he was in community development. Than, than planning, yes.
But he was still good at planning.
He was still good, yeah. But his. But his, his real love and his real strength was in community development grant writing.
You know, it's just worrisome to decide which way to go. Like you say, we've had very low activity, not much happening. I'd like to see more happening and, you know, do you, is that, do you lead to your community development person to help with that, or do you lean towards your planning person to, to help with that? I don't know.
Yeah.
What's the actual function of the planning person besides writing the agendas for the planning board or the zoning board of appeals? What is it that they plan?
They're, they're the expert in writing, writing code, writing ordinances, get, you know, shepherding the process through.
So, it's a technical job?
Yeah. And it's also, I mean, one of the challenges is, it's, planning boards don't actually get a lot of time to do actual planning. You know, it's, it's hard because they, they go from project to project to project. But in, in Rockport, I think, they have gotten some time to do actual planning. And, you know, so some of the work that the planner does is with the ordinance review committee, does a lot of work with the ordinance review committee and the different boards and other committees, you know, helping shepherd them through and work, you know, the work with the planning board is, is important work.
Yeah. Because it sounds to me like that is, that's a, a, a technical job that keeps you out of trouble, that keeps the process moving.
Knowing the laws.
Yeah, I'm saying, it's a technical job that keeps you out of trouble and makes sure the process moves along. Whereas to me, an economic development person should be charged not only with, with grant writing, but with, with the kind of, of working with the comprehensive plan and with the comprehensive plan committees, to write and to look at, like the RES site, what do you do with seven and a half prime acres?
That's plant, that's more planning.
Well, see, I'm, I'm just defining it differently, yeah.
Yeah, that's the role of a planner. And there's a difference between community development and community economic development. Economic development is different.
Yeah.
But there is, there's overlap.
Yeah, there is overlap, yeah. There is overlap, but they're not all the, it's not all the same.
Well, are we looking for a community development person or a community economic development?
We're looking for a community development person. That's what the job title is.
And how do you define that, if I may ask?
It's, it's, it's the grant, it's grant write, it's, there's the planning piece and then there's grant writing, the grant writing and community development piece, which is slightly different than somebody that you bring in that's just an economic development director.
Okay. So, so the job really, one person should be able to go, to do both planning and?
That's what we, yeah, we, that's what we're shooting for.
I understand we're shooting for, I was just wondering whether that actually happens in the real world. I just don't know.
It ha, it has here in the past. I mean, we had Tom Ford and then Bill Napower, who both were, wore both hats very well.
Yep.
Camden has just gone in that direction because the person they had before, they just hired somebody really was not a, a planner, was more, I don't know how you would phrase it, but they, so it's, I guess the answer is, to your question, is sometimes.
Yeah.
When it works really well, it works really well.
Yeah, we're, we're expecting this person to wear two hats and sometimes three. You know, so it makes it, it makes it tough to find somebody that's really good.
Fifty-fifty, or sixty-forty, seventy-thirty?
Well, I think, the problem with it is that the, the plant, and my, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but from my observation, the planning piece of it, if you let it, can suck up a lot of time in terms of, you know, dealing with applicants who come in who want a building permit and dealing with all that and getting things ready for the planning board and the zoning board and things like that, and just dealing with ordinances. It's a time management issue, I think, where it's, it's very easy to, to push that economic development piece off to the side, saying, well, I got to get this thing done by tomorrow and I got to get this, this bundle of work done by the end of the week or something like that, so I'm going to work on that. And this other stuff gets pushed off to the side. So, it's a rare person, I think, who can wear both hats well.
Yeah, because in a lot of ways, it's the economic development part that is sort of more important. I mean, I know getting the day-to-day activities is important, but, you know, if you got someone that's looking five or 10 years down the road and has a vision and helps the town with its vision moving forward, I think that's pretty important.
Otherwise, there's not much to plan.
Yeah, right. Well, it's, the, the, the role of the planner is also to keep the, the planning board out of trouble because that's, when they make mistakes, it's, it's expensive.
Costly.
It's really expensive. And we had a case, I'm not sure when that was, Linda, when we were in litigation over the elevator.
CMCA.
And, and that's, that, that took up a lot of time, a lot of money and a lot of, you know, a lot of political capital for the town, dealing with that issue, where, you know, you know, a, a well-trained planner potentially might have been able to keep us out of that, that issue.
Well-trained architects should have kept us out of that issue.
Yep.
Well, can I ask a question?
Yep.
Line fifty-six oh five, what is NFPA?
National Fire, National Fire Protection.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. That's what they, was the one.
So, I, I think, I mean, what Mark brought up is cooperation with Camden, I think, is something that's maybe worth.
I mean, you know, you're already looking at it, so it's not, I mean, we're doing it in other areas, so even if you tried it for a year at, you know.
And one thing, maybe Chris can answer, but I know you're training, you're, you're paid firefighters in code enforcement, is how much time are they spending on that and how's that going from your perspective?
You just got your answer.
Good answer.
I think it's worth considering.
Okay. Because it, my only thought is if there's a resource there that Camden may be underusing, maybe we can, you know.
Yeah, things like that you can measure, you can measure, assign a price to it and just pay, you know, pay for the service.
Plus, maybe, you know, we can look at what this guy in Camden, what his strength, his strength is. And maybe if it's in planning, you know, then maybe we can spend a little bit on our own to, you know, work for economic development.
One of those, I mean, one of the strengths in Camden is, you know, their, their town, their town manager, Audrey, that's, that's her skill. And, and she's a planning and community development director. She's got her master's in that. And so, you have, we have somebody next door that, that's what, she's a trained planning and community development director.
She has a job, though.
No, I know, but, but.
But she could help us understand the issue.
She, yes. You know, there's a great, there's a great resource there.
I got, you know, me and numbers, I do have a question, because on the wages for the said possible employee, it's sixty-four thousand eight hundred and twelve. And by my little calculations, when you add three percent, it's thirty-six more dollars than what's showing on the board.
Thirty-six more?
Yeah. Sixty-four eight twelve.
Well, the prior year number, they round to the nearest whatever.
Well, yeah, I just used the salary of sixty-four eight twelve plus three percent, and it come up to sixty-six seven fifty-six and thirty-six cents. So, it's thirty-six dollars.
Yeah, but when I calculated this year's wages, I went on his hourly rate or what his weekly rate was now.
Would that was ten cents difference? I mean, thirty, thirty-six dollars difference.
Well, I think, you know, when we meet next week, this is something, us as the policymakers, we may have to talk about this. And do we want to look for somebody who is a little less than full-time? Do we want to think about contracting out for some services? You know, these are all things that, that we can talk about. I don't know that we'll necessarily save a ton of money, but maybe, maybe there are better ways to do it than what we've been doing, I guess, is the point. Stevie?
I know this is nickel and dime, but I'm going back to the little things. And the idea that Diane's salary was less because she hadn't had experience in that job, doing that here. And yet, this is a new person, right, under this budget? And that would be a new person who might have other credentials, but not, he'd be new to this job and that, or he or she, and there's a, a jump there, so I.
That's not necessarily what we would offer to pay, though.
No, okay, but that's what.
That's true, yeah.
I mean, it's.
But, but the point is taken, you know, we may want to put a different number in the budget there to, to reflect the fact that we would have a new person who wouldn't necessarily be built in. And I, I believe that when Jamie came in, and the, the actual fourteen-fifteen number, I think, was a partial year. But before that, the prior director was at a higher salary, I believe, because Jamie was starting out as a new guy.
And as, as I said earlier, I typically try to hire somebody at one rate and then say, when you achieve these, these thresholds of, you know, I expect you to get to here and I expect you to get to here and I expect you to get to here, there's a pay increase for those, reaching those points.
But that should be across the board, I think.
For, we do that with new, with new hires.
Yep.
Yeah. Everybody's benchmarks are a little different depending on what their job is, but.
In that case, one of the, the, the thresholds for that position was that the person get their certification for code enforcement. When they got to certain levels of certification with code enforcement, they moved up.
So, I think on this budget, that, you know, the number, the numbers that we have to fool with are the salary numbers and the contracted services numbers and when we decide how we want to go with that. Unless anybody else has any other thoughts there. The only other thing we have, we have the Conservation Commission. Apparently, the Chair of the Conservation Commission responded to some of our questions last week. She was unable to be here tonight because she has a sick child. Meghan, I'll get that up in a minute.
Yeah, trees.
And that's, let me find the page number for that.
It'll just be a minute while Dr. Kip.
Okay. I'm, I'm just looking to get back to the page in the budget where we, oh, page two-nineteen is where that budget moved in the budget document.
Chair, could you eBRA PDH with the remaining schedule?
With what?
Is the remaining schedule the same as what's in here, has it changed?
Yeah, as far as I know, it just changed the dates, but I think we're basically done. Next.
Looks like the, Alan. Okay. Okay, we're back. So, this compares with page two-twenty, I think. Ms. Elaine's professional fees, she has zero in there where we had two-fifty. Thirty-one oh five is two-fifty. Thirty-eight oh five.
My guess is, is that maybe the department head made some adjustments to what the committee wanted prior to the department head actually submitting the budget, because some of these numbers aren't what was submitted by the department head.
Okay. Well.
She's a little late to the process.
I guess, I mean, I, you know, where, I guess, I don't know what to do with, with this budget then. Because this is one where we had the supporting information, didn't agree with the budget, and we had a lot of questions that.
This budget was also several months late.
Yeah, it's kind of too bad that someone couldn't have come in her place. Sorry, Meghan, what did you?
I said this budget was also several months late, so we didn't have the time to go through it like we did other ones.
Did she answer the questions we had about the tree stuff?
I did not directly ask her those questions. I thought she was going to.
I have actually a, a whole lecture from my wife to give to her on.
On trees?
I, I have questions in terms of how they decide what trees to buy. All, there was a, there was a picture in the Free Press showing people happily planting trees, and all the trees that were listed as available are the worst possible choices for street trees and will leave us with years and years of maintenance and falling down trees and bombed, bombed on the heads citizens. So, I have lots of questions about the trees. Right now, my, my, what I would do is simply say, no money for the trees. Yeah, you need a, you need a lesson in horticulture and I could direct her where to go. So, but I don't have any other directions here, any other comments, because I haven't seen this yet to know anything, except all I know is everything that I've got here has apparently been changed.
I don't know where to go with this.
I don't think we can do anything with it right now.
I think, I just found the other half of the generator money.
A much better.
I mean, the water quality monitoring, we certainly need to continue that process. That's, that's all legitimate and the.
It's about, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You know, the, I mean, I don't think we want to pull the rug out from under with dues and memberships and stuff. It's not that much money.
Where are they in?
But I think, Jan, you're right. I mean, it would be nice to know about these tree, what the tree situation is and to have it, have it explained to us and.
Well, it was explained to me a couple of years ago. I complained about it then, and I was told, well, they're free trees, basically, because it's a matching grant. But I looked up the trees, Dora looked up the trees, and none of them are, are, are street trees. There's a whole institute at Cornell University on street tree, urban horticulture that would provide fabulous information. And I don't know, I just want to know where they get the ideas for the trees that they grow.
Yeah, they presented to the pathways committee for some reason about trees and sidewalks and stuff like that. I forget where they said they got it.
Know where this is going, that's all.
Well, we're suffering a little bit too, because the planning director was involved with this Conservation Commission as well, and so we're, we're lacking a little bit there. So, I guess, maybe, maybe, I mean, we have a meeting, the Select Board has a meeting next Monday at three o'clock, three to seven, to start chewing through this budget stuff and going through it. And that's the Select Board Workshop Budget Committee is more than welcome to be there, but it's, it's our discussion. But if, if Kim could come, then it would be nice to at least have some information there rather than just going through this and making, really making guesses.
If you don't have the information, how can you, like, honestly make it?
Well, we can. It's, it's hard, but, you know, but if, if she could come, that would be good. So, I guess we have gone through everything at this point.
So, our job is finished?
No, our job is just beginning.
This was easier than I thought.
It's a wrap.
So, next, next Monday, we, the Select Board meets from three until seven to start really going through. And now we have to, to put the rubber to the road and go back and all the things that we've sort of suggested that we want to do, whatever, we have to start having a discussion about that and, and working toward our consensus budget votes. And then, once we finish that, then the Budget Committee gets a crack at it to, to make your recommendations and then we can, the Select Board can consider those again. But ultimately, the Select Board decides what goes on the warrant.
Can I, and that's, you mean Monday night's meeting or in April?
Monday night.
The April meeting is when we actually vote to put stuff on the warrant.
So, I, I have a, a question that we might consider next week. I would like to look at everything except wages first. and then go back after we've done all the hard work, and then look at the wages for increases or not.
It's one way to do it. I mean, there's, there's certainly a lot of things, a lot of other, a lot of other lines. I mean, we can do that, and in the past, what we've done is, is we've gotten a number saying that, that the wage increases amount to this much money, so we know how much it is. And we can do that at the beginning or the end of the process, whatever the board wants to do. Some of them are out of our control, the union wage increases.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I, I understand that, I'm just saying, I don't want to be driven by other decisions by, based on, you know, what the wage increase might be, I mean.
That's, that's not unreasonable. I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
He's supposed to be back on the twenty-second, he told me. Whether that means he's landing here.
Gotta spend his whole weekend watching live stream.
Well, that, that means he's landing in the, you know, on the twenty-second, or.
He hasn't decided to stray across the north border.
He did want to go to see the demilitarized zone. That was one of his goals.
Well, thank you, everybody.
To members of the Budget Committee, I'm going to pick Meghan's brain.